All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. We're gonna start the meeting with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and members of the Armed Forces. That'll be followed by an invocation by myself and the pledge of allegiance from Commissioner Moss. If everybody would please rise.
Dear Lord, today we seek blessings on the task before us. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality. We ask this in your holy name, amen.
Thank you first to all of our veterans in the audience. With Veterans Day coming up, and we're happy to acknowledge you every day of the year, we see Mayor Dodd, former Mayor Fred Jones, and Mr. Mike Johansson, and I know there are others as well. Thank you all. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice overall.
All right. Welcome to our special call meeting regarding the urban service boundary. We're gonna start with a presentation by staff on the 2024 Urban Service Boundary Study. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chris Baltar, Planning and Development Services Director. So for the past nine months, the county has been working with Inspire Placemaking to do a thorough evaluation of the Indian River County's urban service boundary. It was originally adopted in 1990 and has had little changes since then. Back then, we had much smaller population, and we know today that we've grown a whole lot. As part of the ongoing comprehensive plan update, Eric and his team at Inspire have assessed the USB's current capacity and developed recommendations for amendments needed to accommodate our continued growth responsibly. These recommendations will be incorporated into the comprehensive plan and the land development regulations, hopefully within the next coming year. And with that being said, I'd be happy to introduce Eric Rash from Inspire Placemaking.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Chris. And good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. When I get my PowerPoint pulled up here, I'll get started. So again, for the record, Eric Rash with Inspire Placemaking, 4767 New Broad Street, Orlando, Florida, 32814, here to present the findings of our urban service boundary study that we've been working on this year. I'll give you a quick introduction to what the urban service boundary is, and then I'll get into the existing conditions. Most importantly, the carrying capacity analysis, where we evaluated all the vacant land within the boundary. I'll talk a little bit about our public engagement efforts to date, and then finally, I'll conclude with some recommendations. And we're really encouraged to get your feedback, and again, thank you for having this special meeting today. So just in terms of the introduction, I think Chris covered a little bit of this. It was, the urban service boundary was established back in 1990, and since that time, the population within the county has almost doubled. So it's also known as the urban service area, and this is the area in the county where you'll find urban density. So, you know, this is where the county is committed to providing water and sewer, roads, parks, stormwater and drainage, those types of public facilities. And it also importantly serves as the urban growth boundary. So inside the boundary, that's where you're gonna find, you know, your commercial uses and your suburban and urban densities. Outside of the boundary, you're limited to a maximum of one dwelling unit per five acres. So really, kind of the line in the sand between urban and rural. And why have an urban service boundary? And their use throughout the state and various jurisdictions really works to reduce urban sprawl by containing growth in a specific area. As I mentioned, functions as that urban growth boundary, and then it protects those areas that are outside of the boundary, protects that rural character that you'll see in those rural areas. And finally, it allows for cost-effective provision of public infrastructure. So you're not running water and sewer far outside of the area that the county services. This is the current boundary. It's pretty difficult to read on such a small PowerPoint presentation, just for the, you know, scale of it. You'll see that primarily it's located to the east of I-95, with the exception of a small area on the State Road 60 corridor, south of 60, and then, you know, the city of Felsmere also has, is considered completely within the urban service boundary, and they've annexed a large portion of land west of 95. But generally speaking, it's located east of 95, and there are two relatively large enclaves, total almost 20,000 acres. You can see there, the holes in the donut, as they're called, north of, one north of 60 and one south. And I'll just note that all of the cities are completely within the urban service boundary. So for ease of, kind of digestion of what the boundary is, we've split it up into north, central, and south. So you can zoom in a little bit more and get a better idea of the boundary. So this is the city of Sebastian, located kind of in the center of the screen. You can see the recent annexation, Graves South Annexation, on the south of 85th, and that's the beginning of that northern enclave. Zooming into the central portion, you can see that enclave extends southward. It's bordered by Felsmere on the west and Sebastian on the north, which really have created that enclave through their annexations. And then zooming into the south, you can see the portion I referenced here off 60, west of 95, and then, you know, you've got area outside of the urban service boundary in the south-central, which is generally comprised of five-acre ranchettes. So as I mentioned, we split it into north, central, and south, just because it's so large. It's about 150,000 acres in terms of the area we studied. That's the areas that are in color shown on the screen. The area within the USB that's unincorporated is really, the primary focus of the study is about 43,000 acres. The area outside is about 41,000. There's about 40,000 acres of incorporated lands through the various cities. And then, there are about 27,000 acres that don't have assigned parcels. So those are gonna be the river, the rights-of-way, those types of things. So we started the study by doing population projections, and so we looked at the historic population trends. We also incorporated research and data from the University of Florida's Bureau of Economic and Business Research, was kind of the gold standard of population projections within the state. And we developed population projections out to 2050, and required by state law to do that for permanent residential and for seasonal. So we established that roughly 68% of the county is living in unincorporated area, about 11% is seasonal. So, you know, kind of using those medium projections, as they say, we estimate that there's gonna be about 157,000 people projected through 2050. So that's a population projection increase over the time period of about 43,000 residents. We also looked at all of the existing land uses within the study area. So this is primarily focused on the area within the urban service boundary. About 31% of the land currently is single-family residential, about 24% is determined to be vacant, 8% public, 7% still has some remnant agricultural use on it, and then, you know, residential, common area, recreation, conservation make up the rest. It's worth noting that these calculations were developed based on Department of Revenue codes, so those are assigned when you pay your taxes. So when you see the parcel data that is used to determine these uses, it's all based on those DOR codes, as they say. And you can see, not unsurprisingly, a lot of agriculture in the enclave areas outside of the USB. The commercial really kind of hugs the 60 corridor, and then, preponderance of single-family residential as you move to the east. We also looked at the existing future land use map. We do have a couple blowups of that over on the side here. You know, the low-density residential districts make up about 55% of the entire county today within the USB. Commercial's about 12%. The medium-density category is about 14%, and then, conservation, 5%, and so on. And as you can see, the Ag 1 area is the area outside of the USB there in the enclave area. So as Chris mentioned, we really were tasked with determining the capacity of the existing USB and the existing future land use map as it relates to the population projections through 2050. Can it accommodate the growth that's projected through that time period? So we used the adopted future land use map. We netted out all of the environmentally sensitive lands, wetlands and water bodies. And we also, this is important, we assumed a 70% maximum allowable density in household size of 2.21. So the 70% maximum allowable density, we know that, you know, it's rare for projects to actually reach their maximum when we look at what actually gets built. So we wanted to make it as realistic as possible and as conservative as possible to make sure that we had enough capacity within the boundary. So we took all the vacant land, we applied those future land uses, we applied the 70% rate, and we determined that we can accommodate about 51,000 people through the existing land use map. So in short, you've got 51,000 people that can be accommodated through the existing map, and that's the vacant property only. That's not even contemplating any redevelopment or anything that's underbuilt that, you know, may be brought to a higher and better use throughout the time period. So, you know, we found that it can actually accommodate the 43,000 people roughly that are anticipated through 2050. These are the maps that really just show where that vacant land is by future land use, and we've got a whole series that shows the location of those properties. And they're scattered throughout the north, central, and south study area. So, you know, that's kind of the quantitative side. We did a lot of qualitative research with this as well. We wanted to engage the public. That was a big, big part of the scope. So we created a project website, which launched in mid-April, had an online survey, and we also did six public workshops with three specific exercises, and I'll walk you through those and what the results were. So the website was launched on April 17th of this year, and we closed the survey on June 28th. We had over 4,100 website views, which is really good, and over 1,100 survey responses was incredible for a community of this size. This is just a snip of what the website looked like. It was really a one-stop shop for everything related to the project. We had, you know, the reports were uploaded, the presentations were uploaded. We have a short video, the educational video, just explaining what the USB was. And then, we had our survey and the schedule. So we asked a few, you know, questions related to growth, you know, what are your top concerns relating to growth? And the number-one response that we received was the impact on the natural environment. That was the biggest concern from residents who took the survey. And then, infrastructure and traffic congestion, both were number two. And then, change in community character, people were concerned with that. And you can see here, also 31% of respondents commented on housing affordability being a concern. We asked simply, what type of development should the county prioritize? And it was pretty easy choices, suburban or urban? So do you want to have more single-family primarily development with, you know, car-dependent housing, detached single-family, or more urban, where you incorporate a mix of uses, some multifamily, that type of development? About 2/3 of folks said that they prefer suburban, low-density development. So we did six workshops, and we spread them out throughout the county. We did one at the North County Library, one series, one series at the IG Center, and one here in the chambers, that was the last one. And we also mixed them up, so we had a couple, we had three during the day and three during the evening, so we can get a diverse group of respondents. We also moved them, we tried to move them as early as we could, we knew we were going into the season where folks might be leaving. So we had them in May to hopefully catch some of those folks who are seasonal residents. One of the exercises we did was a population growth exercise. You know, we're anticipating 40,000 people moving here, where should they go? We'll give you a dot that represents 10,000 people, show us where they should go. Got a lot of responses for downtown Vero, which is, you know, outside of the scope of unincorporated county, some responses in the south portion of the county, an area west of the New Oslo interchange, and then up on the 85th Street corridor, we got a bunch of responses. If you cluster them down, those were the two, kind of the biggest ones, really in that central enclave and west of the Oslo interchange, as well as downtown Vero Beach. We also asked folks, what type of growth would they prefer to see throughout 2050? And you had a bunch of different options here. You can do something a little bit more dense with a mid-rise apartment, all the way down to large lot, single-family. And unsurprisingly, you know, we got about 22% of the folks wanting to see more large lot, single-family as the primary character within the community. There were some folks who were interested in mixed-use development and conservation subdivisions, which were the other top two. And we had a community ideal wall, where folks can just express any other concerns they may have with growth, and this was really a free-form kind of exercise. We compiled all the comments that we received on those walls and put together this cloud that just shows the most common terms, and the most common term that was written throughout all of those exercises was affordable housing. People want growth management and equitable access to services, environmental compliance being really the top ones. So just in terms of the engagement itself, to summarize all the exercises, the survey responses, I think the top concerns were environmental impacts and impacts to infrastructure and traffic, which is not unsurprising. There's a preference for low-density, single-family development, there's a need for affordable housing, we heard that time and time again at the workshops, and there's a preference to keep growth within the existing USB. So just to give our preliminary recommendations, and certainly really appreciate the board's feedback while we finalize this report and go into the overall comp plan update, we had, we had five specific recommendations based on what we heard and the analysis that we conducted on the existing USB. So the first is targeted USB expansion. I'll run through each of these on individual slides. Inter-local service boundary agreements with the municipalities, particularly Felsmere and Sebastian. USB expansion for affordable housing. A policy for bisected properties is really a cleanup. And then, increased densities for affordable housing, not really related to the USB and the boundary itself, but it's something that could be helpful to prevent future expansions to the boundary. So in terms of targeted USB expansion, we know that the interchange at Oslo and I-95 is really gonna be a catalyst, $100 million project, expected to be completed in 2027. And I think there's a model for expansion west of the boundary specifically for those types of interchanges. I mean, State Road 60, where you may have an issue with the uses, or, you know, some of the form of the development in that area. You know, it seems logical to have growth within the influence of that intersection and that location. So that was our first. We did some preliminary analysis of what that could look like. If you were, and this is just dropping a pin, not trying to pick winners and losers here, but if you go a quarter mile, you pick up about two parcels on the south side. Those are both owned by FDOT, so I wouldn't anticipate too much economic development opportunity with that strategy. If you go a half-mile, you start picking up some of the private properties, and then if you go a mile out, you start picking up a few more, which is, you know, kind of comparable to what happened at 60. If you look on the north side of the map on the right, it's roughly the same type of area that was brought into the USB in that location. But, you know, we recommend looking at it a little bit closer. I think, you know, it may be wise to study the whole corridor, because it's not just the intersection. You'll note that there's a section of Oslo Road that starts in the boundary on the east side, or excuse me, on the west side, and then it moves to the east towards US-1, leaves the boundary and then comes back in. So similar to what happened on 60 to the north, you know, you've got kind of a commercial corridor that's been established in that location. I assume there's gonna be a significant amount of development pressure in that location after that interchange is open. So I think it would be prudent to look at the land uses, utility situation, the environmental impacts, access, and then, you know, really important, the rural protections, because you do have a lot of five-acre ranchettes. Those folks were at our workshop, and they were seeking some protections and assurances that the boundary was not gonna be expanded within their communities. Inter-local service boundary agreements, this is something that's outlined in the county's current comprehensive plans, also referenced in Sebastian's comprehensive plan and Felsmere's comprehensive plan. You'll note that the boundary on the west side has been established by Felsmere. So as these municipalities annex, they become part of the USB, and they essentially control where that line is through their annexations. And annexation, of course, is, you know, governed by state statute, and you've got Sebastian on the north that's annexed down to the south into that area. We would suggest pursuing some sort of joint planning area agreement or inter-local service boundary agreement with those municipalities to dictate what happens in those areas, so everyone's on the same page. So that's just a suggestion for ISBAs. Expansion for affordable housing was one of our other recommendations. These are just some of the scribbles from the public workshops on some of our boards, a lot of feedback regarding affordable housing throughout the process. Folks, you know, commenting that their kids can't move back, and, you know, a lot of anecdotal stories that we heard when we were talking to residents in the community. So if there's a way to target specific expansions for affordable housing, and I'm not suggesting that it's wise to run utilities three miles outside of the boundary for an affordable housing project, but if there's something that's immediately adjacent to the boundary, there's utilities in place, it could be a good strategy for allowing some of that stuff to occur. The policy for bisected properties, and it really, this is, as I mentioned, a cleanup. It really doesn't affect too many properties, but you can see on the northeastern side of the enclave, the northern enclave, there are a number of properties up there that, when the boundary was drawn, for whatever reason, it cut a lot of properties off. So some are half-in, half-out, some are majority in, partially out. So we would suggest having some sort of policy to recognize as those being within the boundary within reason. Wouldn't want a policy that would say, if you have one acre in and 100 acres out, that you're considered in. But, you know, I think Orange County has a good policy that works to limit, you know, those extreme examples, that also allows those people consideration as being within the boundary. And then, this was the final recommendation, and as I mentioned, it doesn't really, it's not really a recommendation related to the boundary itself, but if there's an opportunity to incentivize affordable housing within the boundary, as I mentioned, we heard that time and time again at these workshops, that was one of the primary things that were mentioned by the general public. That'll allow you to accommodate more population within the boundary, and it'll, you know, when you can accommodate more in the boundary, there's less pressure to expand it moving forward. So next time you have this conversation, you know, hopefully you'll get similar results if that's the direction you want to go in. So with that, I'm glad to take any questions, and certainly look forward to your feedback as we finalize the study and, you know, work on the comp plan update. Thanks.
Commissioners, question? Commissioner Moss?
How did you define environmentally sensitive lands?
We looked at wetlands and water bodies. So we have GIS data that actually has the boundary of all those wetlands within the county, and so we anticipate that those would not be developed on. Yes, ma'am?
Other questions? Commissioner Earman, anything? You're thinking, okay. Commissioner Fleischer, questions, comments?
I'm anxious to hear from the public, but
Okay.
I know we talk privately, we all individually talk privately regarding it. Why are we here? What would, give me the largest motivator for consideration.
Sure, yeah, and I, great question. You know, from my perspective, the fact that this hasn't been fully evaluated since 1990, and the population has nearly doubled throughout that timeframe. The county's embarked on this overall comp plan update, which is required by state statutes every seven years. So that really provided a good platform to really study something that hasn't been studied in, you know, quite some time. So the goal, I know they've been getting a lot of development pressure, I'm sure you guys have seen it and had those conversations with applicants, saying that there's no capacity within the boundary, those types of comments. So that was really our scope, to evaluate that and provide that recommendation to staff.
During the process, when we were having our, you know, our charrette-type meetings, and you had community involvement and community engagement, how do you identify those that were in attendance? In other words, identify those that were in attendance? In other words, again, I know people signed in, but was it truly what we would consider the suggested population of effect, as opposed to, well, they're talking about the urban service boundary and we collected all that data, where, when we had community input? Because I believe that the difference in input would be quite substantial if we had those who happen to have parcels that are in certain areas and those who do not. Obviously, people towards the water area, regardless of whether it's river or ocean, it would not make that much of a difference. But going west, did we identify anybody that, or did we collect any data for what we perceive would be affected parties?
That's a good question, Commissioner. And, you know, I didn't, you know, qualify my comments before I met with folks and say, well, do you own property? What's your motivation for being here? We invited the entire county. It was a publicly noticed meeting and anyone was able to participate. And I can tell you, there was a pretty diverse group in the room. I talked to folks that, particularly at the daytime meetings, are, you know, clearly working. But you had a lot of citizens as well who were, you know, just really concerned with their community. So I think it was a really diverse mix. And I'll tell you that, you know, even on the survey, we did ask some specific questions about demographics, how long you lived here, you know, those types of things to figure out who was responding to the survey. And of course, anyone can write anything they want on a survey, so I can't go back and check and see who wrote what. But it was a diverse mix of folks who've lived in the county for a very long time, if, if you believe what the survey results were. So...
Other than community engagement and our surveys, did you look at our current infrastructure standings as where we are, where we need to be?
Yeah, there's some, there's some write-up on the infrastructure within the existing conditions report. We couldn't get into the nuts and bolts of, I mean, it's 150,000 acres, so I couldn't get as granular as I like to for that. But there, we did do an analysis of infrastructure and there's a, there's a, there's a write-up within the report.
I want, want the public to know that there was consideration for availability use with water and other considerations, too.
Absolutely. Those are going to be critical in any, I mean, whether growth happens in the cities or the, or the county. Absolutely. 100%. Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, Chris, thank you. And 34 years ago, obviously, things were different. Can you tell us a little bit about how the original, how you think the original, and I know we talked about this last week, the original boundary was developed?
Yeah. And unfortunately, I wasn't around when the original boundary was developed.
Yeah, he was born.
You got a type of input on that, but, you know, I know that it hasn't been modified in a long time. And a lot of the boundary has been essentially created by the annexations of those cities. So the boundary you see out there today isn't what was originally approved in 1990.
Right. It appears that it was somewhat linear from 95 and 60.
That's right.
And then I guess in anticipation of Oslo in 95, that small USB enclave was included. I say that, if you could bring up that one slide, Chris, where it's got that rectangle, rectangular, it's South County, the, I think it's black border. And also, Chris, while you're doing it, is it safe to say that North County is, is essentially covered within the USB? So I say that because primarily our focus would be central and south.
Is this the slide you're looking for, Commissioner?
No, sir. The, the one that's a large rectangle going from...
Is this one?
No.
Was it the bisected properties? And maybe that was it. Just...
What did the, what did the map show, Commissioner Law?
There it is. Back, back to that one.
One more back.
Right. So, Chris, if you can, if you can define the, you know, the north boundary, is that Fifth Street Southwest next to the Aqua and the, and the yellow?
Fifth Street Southwest is actually a little bit south of the boundary.
Right. And then to the south would be 13th Street Southwest.
That's correct. So I, it's, you can see the, the Fifth Street on there. It actually extends a little bit further to the north on, and, you know, this was just an idea of the extent of a potential study area, knowing that we really want to have some protections for those folks that are in the five-acre ranchette area. If you do want to intensify that corridor, you know, we would, we would suggest having some transition area or some buffering or, or something that establishes some projections from the folks on the north and the south. So that's the only reason that, that box was drawn as big as it was.
Right. So in 1990, at some point, someone was thinking about Oslo and 95 being within the USB. But they didn't go linear west. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Right. So as we know, we have water, county water at 66 and Oslo. And I believe that it goes west to, I don't think, maybe Sean's here, not quite to 74th. And obviously not sewer, but ironically, we have sewer and water at the landfill. So under that one slide that you showed, a quarter mile, half mile, and then one mile west of 95, and I think Commissioners, when we think about 34-year-old document that we have been looking at, and we have to envision, I think Chris mentioned, I think statute also talks about revisiting this every seven years, which obviously is, is healthy for the, healthy for the state and healthy for the county. So I, I think that one of the primary bullets, if not the most primary, would be Oslo and 95. The bifurcation section, although that needs consideration, it's not as significant as, as what we do in this particular area. So I'm interested in hearing from the folks that are in the Aqua there that are not obviously within the, literally within the USB and, and how we could do that. And the other thing is, I think sometimes when we hear discussion about the USB, we talk about the expense that it's going to cost for the county, for the water, sewer, in some cases, fiber, I would suppose. But understand that that's not going to be completely borne by the county. And I think that's, that's something that we certainly need consideration. And as we know, at 95 and 60, where USB is beyond 98th Avenue, I think there might be some consideration. Obviously, we have water and sewer there. That might be some consideration for affordable housing, as well as, you know, the south end. There's no reason why that wouldn't be afforded to, to some of our residents. And this may not be a question, maybe a question for the administrator, but there's been some discussions about a medical node. Mr. Administrator, if you've had an opportunity to study that, and would that make sense out towards the 95 and Oslo corridor?
So I'm not going to say it doesn't make sense, but I think it's premature. At the next board meeting, we'll be, the board will be asked to approve the committee selection on the Economic Development Strategic Action Plan, which will evaluate our local economy, determine what's most appropriate for our local economy that fits in with the character and identifies those specific. But I would say, you know, absent agricultural, medical and health sciences, the number two sector in Indian River County. So I mean, I mean, it does seem to suggest that something capitalizing on that would be advantageous, but I don't want to say that prematurely.
Right. Yeah. And we've all heard talk about, you know, one hospital particularly being on the other side of the railroad track. So that might be something to consider. Look, we're talking about something that's 34 years old now. So where will we be in 15, 20, or 34 years? Albeit, visiting this every seven years, which again, is certainly healthy for our community. But, Chris, so is it safe to say that that, that triangle, or that rectangle there outlined in black is, is one of the primary, if not the primary focus of your study?
Yeah. And I think, you know, to your point, Commissioner, that's, that's what really came out of our analysis in terms of the investment and the interchange and the backdrop of the fact that there is capacity within the boundary today through 2050, that, you know, if it makes sense anywhere, that would be the, the area that would make sense.
Right. And of your studies that indicate how many people and/or residential lots, if you will, we could have, it's safe to say that there's some parts of the county that whether it be where a resident works or recreates, may not be the most advantageous place for them to build a home. You know, they work in a North County or South County or whatnot. And it's also safe to say that there's, there's less desirable areas of the county. For example, no dirt roads in certain areas. Oslo Park comes to mind. So I think we, I don't want to say discount those numbers, but if we have a finite amount of, of land that is available, truth be known is, some folks don't want to live in those areas. Is that right?
Perhaps.
Right. That's all I have for now, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Commissioner Law has a question about, you know, as far as, I guess, what was the modicum of the idea of how that, or the strategy in 34 years ago?
Right.
And I'm only thinking that, that the Aqua area was where we used to smell citrus blossoms and sea agriculture. And that's probably why that was the very case. A lot of those areas would, they preferred to supply their own water for irrigation with flow wells and wells. And I, I don't think that, I believe that was the, the reason why it was avoided, which is not necessarily the case now. Haven't seen an orange at a gas station in a number of years. And, and I think that the tide has changed. I think that 34 years ago, I'm only here 18 years, but 34 years ago, there was a whole lot of oranges in this town and grapefruits.
I was just curious on how and why it was included in the, in the USB back then. And it, and it didn't go west of 95?
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, so somebody...
It was grown.
Well, and there was discussion about 95 and Oslo 34 years ago as well. So maybe our forefathers were thinking, you know, it's coming sooner or later.
Good point.
So for the section of the urban service boundary that's in the south part near Oslo, reason why it ran along the I-95 corridor and in that south section was because of the Indian River County jail and also the landfill that was there. Those were in...
Prison.
Yes, the prison.
The youth prison.
They had to include that because of the juvenile prison? Had to include that in the USB?
That we were providing services for it, yes. Water and sewer. So that's what was actually included in there.
There you have it.
Other questions? Commissioner Moss?
I have one more question. Related to affordable housing, it seems from what you're saying, there's a general preference for single-family housing. However, affordable housing, for some reason, is linked to increasing densities to solve the problem. How do those two concepts jive, if they do?
Yeah. And they're a good question. There are a lot of different tools in the toolbox as it pertains to affordable housing. There's different unit types that aren't necessarily single-family, but, you know, accessory dwelling units or, you know, mother-in-law suites or things like that that can be applied to single-family developments that allow for some of that density to be kind of hidden in plain sight in existing communities. There are also, you know, unit types that are compatible with single-family development, such as duplexes, cottage courts, those types of things that aren't your traditional multifamily that, you know, folks would think of when they think of affordable housing. So there's, there's strategies that you can use to incorporate some of that stuff into the lower-density areas, if, if that's the desire of the board.
I'm just wondering, and I did attend a number of the sessions, if the people who are promoting increased densities are the people who want to live in the increased densities. That's all.
Yeah. Good question.
The question is, do they want to, affordable housing, do they want to live what we would say today in 2024, 2025, if someone's going to say, I don't want to live that far west or way out west? Well, most of us remember when way out west was 58th and 60th. So, you know, what is way out west? And what's way out west going to look like?
Madam Chair, I, I wanted to hear a lot of discussion. And Eric, thanks you so much for presenting this. And when I grew up here, I grew up on, you know, Artesian well water being in a pump house that lets the sulfur come out of it and then went into your house. We didn't have county water. I can remember when, when the process started, I think prior to 1990, started in the 80s, I believe, early 80s, late 70s, maybe early 80s. And, you know, there weren't any fire hydrants in the county. There weren't all that stuff. So it's, so it's, 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 it's been a godsend for, for people to get off Artesian wells and, and shallow wells. And I think that, that'll be an advantage, whatever we decide to do here in regards to, to USB, whether we move it or not, whether we add on to maybe an existing old subdivision that's near a water line and sewer line and all that sort of stuff. And that's kind of what I want to ask you about is, is what was the feeling and what's the, what's the idea of, you know, one side of the street, you got a subdivision that was built in the, the early 70s, it's still on shallow wells, they're still on septic tank. And then right across highway, there was, there, there's a subdivision that was built, say, recently. And we all know, and I think a part of the urban service line extending out was done when developments and subdivisions came online because as we still know, that developers, that they want to do something, they have to be on septic and sewer. So what, what is, what was your thought on that with regards to existing buildings, existing businesses, existing subdivisions that are nearby, that are not on, you know, county water and sewer, that are not on urban service? And how does that fit into your study?
That's a great, great comment, Commissioner, and a great question. And I'll tell you, we struggled with this a little bit internally when, you know, we were having the discussions. And, you know, just to kind of set the table, the fact that we found that there was capacity available, it, you know, that kind of shaped the recommendation in terms of, you know, I don't think we need to look as much at those, those areas that, you know, are immediately adjacent to the USB, like the ones you're mentioning. And the struggle for us is, where do you draw the line? Because if you let the folks that are immediately adjacent in, now there's new people that are immediately adjacent. And then if they're in, then the next people are immediately adjacent. So it, it's really a tough question. And I think we probably would have dove into that a little bit more had there not been capacity to accommodate the 2050 population within, within the existing boundary. We would have, you know, probably perhaps recommended something a little bit different as it pertains to those areas that are immediately adjacent. But the fact that there was capacity, I think we really focused on, on that area that, you know, was going to be improved with interchange.
Let's back it up to 2040 instead of 2050, because I'll be 90 years old in 2050. Does that require, if you do, if you look at what I was asking you about, you know, somebody across, a subdivision development, house, a business across the street that, that wants to get on county water and sewer, does that, and I get what you're saying, if you increase one, it opens it up for the next one and all that stuff, does that still allow for, for the study, what it says? I mean, or is that increasing it? Does that still allow?
I think I understand your question, but, you know, and...
If I understand my question.
Every, every property owner has the ability to apply for USB, a privately initiated USB amendment, to increase the boundary for their property and come in and ask for a future land use map amendment to increase their density. So, I mean, it, it could be something that could be handled on a case-by-case basis.
Let me rephrase. Is the capacity there for, for that type of scenario? Okay, the houses across the street, the subdivisions across the street, is that capacity there? Did you... Let me rephrase. Is the capacity there for for that type of scenario, okay, the houses across the street, the subdivisions across the street, is that capacity there? Did you, did you, were you able to look at that? Maybe that's what I was asking.
I see what you're saying. So, yeah, we did do a, we have preliminary numbers in there for wastewater capacity. And I think, you know, in terms of water capacity, the county's going through a water supply plan right now. I believe that's in the process of being improved. I don't know if, you know, the county administration wants to comment on that. But that is something that absolutely needs to be taken into consideration with any expansion, whether the the water's going to be used for something in, you know, municipal limit Sebastian or something that's going to be done here in unincorporated county. So that's, that's something that certainly needs to be evaluated.
Technically, if you're, if you're, if you're hooking up that subdivision that's right across the street that's on septic and on on shallow well, you hook that up, that's essentially extending the urban service line, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't know if that had to deal with the bisected property. Can you explain a little bit of that?
The bisected property, you know, recommendation was really for those those properties that when the line was drawn, for whatever reason, it actually went through the middle of the property. So, you know, you own one parcel and half's in and half's out. It just makes sense to consider, at least, you know, for the extent of that property, consider that to be within the boundary from our perspective, Commissioner.
So what do you, what do you would do with the bisected property? Clean that up, Commissioner? That would be cleaned up. And then we wouldn't be having a discussion about bisected property in the future, because you'd either be in or out, essentially. And with respect to what he mentioned about capacity of water and sewer, currently, and I don't want to speak out of school, but we currently have the capacity for sewer, maybe not as much as as water. But also keep in mind that you do have homes within the existing USB that obviously do not have sewer but have water. Just because you're in the USB doesn't mean you have water and sewer. And just because you're outside doesn't mean that you want one day. And as you talked about incrementally, moving, if you're on that border, could that subdivision come in? Certainly, they could. And they would be paying for that, for that additional hookup. That's what they're doing right now, actually.
In addition to that, though, with the current legislation and the time constraint we have for sewer, there's going to be a big change. And we have, we're behind the eight ball on infrastructure when it comes to the existing properties, because we're either going to have to, the way it stands now at the state, we're either going to have to have each of those homeowners changed to the new system, or they need to be hooked up to the sewer. So we're about ready to undertake a huge infrastructure challenge.
Okay. There is public comment. I do want to hear from the public. And then I think we'll probably have some more comments to make after that, because I believe the goal for this meeting is to make some recommendations, at least on a consensus basis, one way or another, about the five recommendations included. So if there's policies or things that need to start being worked on or conversations that need to come back to us, this is all part of the comprehensive plan update process. So just keep that in mind. At the end of the day, we're going to have to come back and kind of give a little bit more direction so staff knows whether the Oslo area is something we need to look at, or whether the attorney's office might need to start working on some interlocal service boundary agreements, or whatever the case may be, or not, if that's the case too, which that's fine.
Madam Chair, would it be helpful if a member of our staff maybe explains before public comment where the current water exists to the west and or and or sewer?
Sure.
I don't know if that would be Sean or John or.
I think there was a map in the, in this.
Maybe we should pull that up.
In the plan, and you might want to put it on the document viewer.
That might help with discussion.
So it can be referenced while they're talking. And if you don't have one, I can, you can, Kim, you can put mine up there.
Sean thought he was offline.
I did. I was like, I didn't realize it was going to be called up. But Sean Leesky, Utilities Director, I'm sorry, I'm wearing my utilities jacket instead of a nice suit and tie. Yeah, our, our current line extends on Oslo basically to 95 and then goes up and then gets 82nd Street. And primarily what we're serving right now is water and sewer to, and I, and I think as Chris mentioned, to the, to the landfill and to the old youth detention center that is out there was kind of why maybe the urban service boundary was there. But that's essentially where our water line goes. And then it's connected to the north to make a basically a loop of the system. And then we do have a small enclave outside on the west side of 95 along 60 that we are currently providing water and sewer to. So, but that's right now the only area west of 95 that we provide water and sewer.
And there's a few spots between Oslo and, let's say, 5th Street Southwest that does not have water, north and south.
Between Oslo and 5th Street Southwest?
I'm sorry. Yes, to the north. There's a few areas that don't have water.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a number of areas, I think, as somebody else alluded to, there's a number of areas, and I think you said that, Commissioner Law, that there's a number of areas within the current urban service area that are not provided with water and or sewer. In some cases, it's just sewer. In some cases, it's water and sewer. So Pine Tree Park, for instance, is one. That's a subdivision that, right now, I think is within the urban service boundary that is not provided with either. So there certainly are certain areas within that that are currently not. And I, I can't tell you what decisions were made back when and why that was, decision was made. I'm assuming a lot of that had to do with perhaps assessments and individuals within those areas not agreeing to assessments and not agreeing to to pay for the cost of that infrastructure. But I, you know, I can't speak to what what happened and how that was developed years ago.
Sean, that's the map that was included in the study about water service areas. That doesn't mean that everything in that area is served, but to the extent, Commissioner Law, it's helpful to try to point out what it is that you guys are talking about. Is that, if you're trying to make a visual, I don't know.
It's, it's hard to, it's, it's really difficult to pinpoint on here because, you know, Oslo Road is kind of.
But maybe, can you talk about the service areas and what those represent? That's where water may go. It doesn't mean that everything in that is being served, but that's the area in which we plan to serve from those different areas? Is that accurate?
Honestly, I was not involved with the development of this map. So I'm not sure exactly what they're trying to show here, to be quite honest with you.
Okay, that's fine.
You know, to me, I think what you're seeing in the green is areas served by City of Vero Beach. So anything in that area is served by the city. The blue is probably just an area to say that that's kind of the south county and maybe kind of areas that are currently served. I mean, the areas in in blue, the area in red is is the City of Felsmere. We provide sewer services just for a small portion of Felsmere. Felsmere, as you are aware, has their own water utility, so we don't provide services there. The area in in orange is areas where we do have some water and sewer. And as you all are aware, Sebastian right now, all that area that's kind of in that hashed yellow kind of green area is served water but don't actually have sewer as well. I mean, the majority of the homes and residents within State of Sebastian are all still on septic tanks. So again, I, I mean, in generalities, we serve water and sewer to, you know, all those areas in the blue and the yellow to some degree.
So, can I chime in? So, so the, to, the point is, anywhere in those hatched areas are areas where we could plan, based on the urban service boundary, to provide water or sewer?
I mean, theoretically, yes. I mean, I think that's the idea of the urban service boundary, is to be sure that we're providing water and sewer to those areas.
Could you go over the information you shared with me this morning on the capacity of our existing plants, meaning collectively?
Yeah, collectively, right now, on a sewer size, we have two plants where we've got about a million gallons of capacity left. Both are south. And our central wastewater treatment facilities have about a million gallons of capacity. And that's even including the reserved capacity. So years ago, before my time, again, they allowed developers to reserve capacity in the system by buying an advanced certain number of ERUs, equivalent residential units. So that, that capacity actually includes the reserves that have, that are out there currently. At our west wastewater plant, we have about 3.5 MGD, a little bit less than that, available in capacity. Capacity that is 6 MGD right now, we're using about 2.5 of that. So we've got capacity in that plant. The capacity at our, at our water treatment plants, Hobart Water Treatment Plant has a capacity, a treatment capacity of about 17 MGD right now. On a maximum day, we're treating roughly around, I think, 12, 13. And that's at a maximum on an average day. But we do have to plan and have capacity for that maximum, because that's basically saying that at some point during the day, there was a maximum flow being pulled from the plant. But on an average, it's much lower than that. And at our Hobart plant, we have a capacity of about nine MGD and we're using about six. So we do have capacity at our treatment facilities. As I mentioned, we are in the process of starting an integrated water master plan. And a lot of these things will be things that we look at and evaluate and consider, kind of where the urban service boundary is, what is the current capacity? And as developments come on, how do we serve that? And how do we continue to serve that? And where do we get additional water resources? We just recently got a, an increase in our consumptive use permit. We anticipate that kind of being good for another five or six years. But we also believe that we're going to have to look elsewhere and consider other options. So, but we are evaluating that and we're trying to get ahead of that and look to the future and ensuring that we've got adequate capacity for water and wastewater, including those areas that need to be converted to, you know, from septic over to sewer. We want to make sure that we've got adequate capacity for those, those locations as well.
And just for the board's edification, to translate that to actual residents, from a sewer standpoint, based on the available capacity, it's approximately 50,600 residents. From water, it's approximately 89,240 residents. But that presumes that you have all the infrastructure that runs to those sites. And that's, as we talked when we were at Joint City County Meeting with Sebastian, could be about a billion-dollar venture.
And, and a caveat to that, though, is when I say that capacity is there, there are requirements, though, even, you know, in in permits and things like that that we get, our discharge permits, that at a certain level, and they kind of change the way they manage that. But right now, we have to do a capacity evaluation every time we get a new permit issued. So every five years, permits are good for every, for five years. Every five years, we've got to do, go do a capacity evaluation and make sure that during that next five-year permit term, we've got sufficient capacity to to serve the residents that we're serving. It used to be that they said that basically at 70% capacity, you had to start doing some evaluations and studies, and that by 80%, you're, you're actually starting to build a new, you know, expanding your capacity, because you don't ever really want to get to that full capacity. Because, again, your max day, you don't want to push that plant to a max day, even though there's capacity there. You know, you want to start planning and get, get, get capacity expanded before you ever get to that point.
Right. And we, and we agree, we wouldn't reach capacity overnight.
Right.
Right. Madam Chair, if I could ask Chris and Chris a question, then we can go into public comment.
For sure.
And this may be the, the money question, Chris and Chris. We, we obviously established the two enclaves that we have. Half is in the, half part of the county and the others in the south. And it's probably what a lot of folks are going to chat about, knowing this is 34 years old, knowing that we can revisit this in seven years. And I'll just throw this out. What would be the obstacles and or benefits if we closed, included both enclaves, went west, let's say, half a mile from Oslo and 95 and a few, and a little bit further west of where it is on the north end at 60? What would be the obstacles of filling in both of those enclaves, going west on Oslo a bit, let's say, three quarters of a mile, as well as a little further west at 95 and 60 to include the future industrial parks in the name of commerce, I will add? Knowing that, we've already heard about capacity, knowing that this isn't going to happen overnight. It wouldn't happen in 10 years, probably. But what I'm hearing is, from the residents, is it's hard to discern, are you in or out? What if we clean this up and said, okay, here it is, you're either in or you're out? And that would eliminate a lot of future discussions with respect of where exactly this USB is instead of this jagged line? What say you?
And Commissioner, let me just make sure I understand the question. So you're referencing filling in both enclaves, the 20,000 acres essentially, and then also an expansion westward to pick up the Oslo intersection. So it would be roughly, you know, potentially, you know, over, over 20,000 acres. I think the challenge, you know, from, from our perspective, would be adding that much area to the urban service area. We really need to look at, you know, all kinds of public facilities, not just capacity in terms of water and wastewater. We need to look at transportation. We need to look at the parks' level of service. We need to look at all the other levels of service standards that are in the comp plan, law enforcement, fire, all of those different public facilities that would be impacted for.
Right.
An expansion that like that.
Right. Knowing that would take 10 to 15 years.
Sure. So anytime that we add any level of service or any additional properties into the urban service boundary, we have to count for those additional increased densities as well and have to plan for those. So in planning for those, even if we say they won't build out for 30 years, we have to have the ability to serve those properties immediately, have they turn on and increase densities. When you do that large of an expansion, you put a strain on the whole system, whether it be the road network or the utility network or, you know, public safety, response times, that would increase fire stations, police stations. We'd probably need a couple different water sources. Right now, we're in the process of getting a new consumptive use permit. So turning all of those properties basically on and allowed to develop at a higher density would really limit what we could do internally, what we already have in the urban service boundary. That's why the, a strategic approach on targeted spots, if we choose to expand the urban service boundary, is the best with the constraints that we have. Obviously, there's a lot of constraints when it comes to water and sewer capacity, because we do know that we have a septic-to-sewer requirement. So that turns on those properties onto sewer, and we have to account for those capacities as well as any neighborhoods that develop at a higher density. That's also accounts for road level of service, police level of service, fire, all of that goes into that. Generally, we want to make sure that we can serve properly at the right level of service, what's already included into the existing urban service boundary. So it's a give and take of the statutory requirements that we have, especially with the new one by 2030, turning on everybody onto sewer. So that's going to be a give and take on how we do capital increasing projects as well. You know, Sean gave you those numbers just before, and that's without doing any capital increasing projects. There's plenty of capital increasing projects in the actual budget and the capital improvements element for roads, as well as fire stations, police stations. Every time we enter into agreements with large PDs, we have set-asides as well for those. So it's a holistic approach that we take when we look at including properties as well as the level of service and how everything impacts it, because obviously, there's a lot of impacts that go into it.
Got you. So in other words, we're always, well, not always, but we will have enclaves, they may be smaller in size, consideration that impact fees and developers would, would offset that. Giving the timeframe that I'm looking at is that would also give us time for our consumptive use and the like. So that's a, it's a large leap of what I, what I said a few moments ago. But I think that's what a lot of people have in mind. And I think it is incumbent upon us, like I said, if we're going to revisit this every seven years, that, that is something. But at some point, we have to have a clearly defined USB.
Correct. And I can offer you kind of an analogy of our sister county to the south, including a lot of things into their urban service boundary, and then playing catch-up to try to do all of their utilities at once and have those level of service where it becomes a huge strain and becomes a financial burden to their citizens. a huge strain, and becomes a financial burden to their citizens. And I think we have a very great network of citizens and constituents that really care about our citizens. So, you know, we kind of toe the line of keeping it affordable here.
Madam Chair, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Eric, did you, when you did this, did you consider the 2030 bill, that the, that the House, the mandate on, on the communities for the 2030 thing, the DEP and the legislature wanted everybody to do?
Commissioner, that was not a primary focus of our analysis. We were really just looking at the land use capacity within the boundary.
Chris, do you have any idea, what do you think the impacts on this would, would be with regards to that?
I can, I'll have to ask Sean on how many properties he thinks are going to be in it, but obviously, that, that controls our expansion. If we choose to expand the urban service boundary, you know, we only have a certain amount of availability that we can use. We don't want to go over that, and we want to be very conservative of how we use that, because we have obligations to citizens that are already within the urban service boundary. And those are all factors that we take into effect when we're looking to do expansions as well. And whether we expand or not, those are things to take into consideration when you're making recommendations to staff.
I mean, it just seems to me like that's out there. I know it's kind of an unrealistic date, because, you know, I don't think any of the 67 counties have even done engineering on any of this yet, so I don't think it's a realistic thing, but it seems to me like it would impact, you know, as to what we need to do, and how we're going to do it with regards to that.
He's talking specifically about septic.
Correct.
Right, well, there's, you know, I don't, it's not fair to say all 67 counties, because it depends on the nature and the proximity to what they call sensitive waterways. Yes, we do have to somehow abide by that by 2030. We know that it's not going to happen. John just mentioned it's 900 to, 900 million to a billion dollars to have that done, so that's unrealistic. Even if we had all the labors and all the, all the infrastructure in place, we couldn't do it. So there's going to have to be a move with the Florida Legislature here to have that pushed back from 2030 somehow, although we are one of the counties most impacted by it. But yeah, when we talk about the capacity of the sewer system, I think Sean's already illustrated that we're, we're better off with sewer than we are water currently.
Is there any more discussion or comments or questions for, for the consultant at this point? Because if not, I will happily open it up for any public input, and then we can circle back around on the recommendations and the agenda. So if not, anybody from the public that wishes to speak, please come up to either podium and state your name and address from the, for the record. Welcome.
Hi, Joe Garfalo, 109 Yearling Trail, Sebastian, Florida. My question is for Chris. When you did that report, did you use a minimum size for parcel, like how you subtracted out wetlands and preserve area?
Do you want me to respond?
Yeah, go ahead, if you don't know.
No, we did not.
Okay. Just my rebuttal to that is, a lot of our parcels are smaller parcels, they're not really developable, or at a developer's standpoint, to be able to bring a community or a neighborhood of size. So that's why I was like, is that impacted where we said, yes, we have enough land to accommodate it, but as a developer, a local here, the parcels are harder and harder to find, to purchase, inside the urban service line.
And I appreciate that, and that's why I think we, we really added that 70% to knock it down from the maximum, to take down what we thought was realistic on a lot of the parcels. So once we took out the wetlands, then we also took off 70% of the acreage to accommodate for those types of discrepancies.
Okay. Is the data in that report that we can see, how many parcels it was collectively of?
Yeah, we have all of that.
Okay. Is that stuff, is that public to us that we can see as well?
It's not included directly within the report. We have all the raw data, the GAS analysis, all that kind of stuff, if, if any, I mean, if anyone wants to review that, glad to provide it.
Would love to see it, thank you.
Madam Chair, so in other words, he, part of the report, and I spoke with the administrator about this, that formulae used included wetlands, is that correct, John?
So they discounted 30% of any lot, essentially, for sizes recognizing you can't build, you can only build so many units per acre. You can't really, if it's four units per acre, you can't really get four units on that one acre. So they, they discounted to reflect development conditions.
That's correct. And, you know, our analysis found that there were still, you know, capacity for an extra 10,000 people, you know, essentially, even after discounting the 30%, and controlling for wetlands as well.
So just to rephrase that, the study is based on what would happen in a realistic scenario versus what would happen in a maximum on-paper equation?
That was our goal.
Okay.
We anticipated that.
They discern what's buildable and what's not buildable. What's not buildable may be buildable to someone with the resources.
Well, and to Ms., to, to the point that you were trying to make, not, and I think where staff is trying to go, is not every parcel is intended to be a development. Maybe it's just developing as a single-family, independent home, one or two, or whatever the case may be. So I think they were trying to strike a balance, because without going out and surveying every single undeveloped lot, which we would probably be here for another 10 years trying to do, just taking the best information we have and trying to adjust for something realistic.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, for the record, Ryan Sweeney, Assistant Planning and Development Services Director. So the, again, we completely netted out the wetland and other sensitive lands, so those
were deemed to be not buildable whatsoever. Do you know what the acreage was on that? But then, the developable area, which again, is based on land use, not necessarily zoning, which those two things are coupled together. Yeah, we acknowledge, there's a ton of, you know, three, four, five, even 10-acre L1, L2 parcels that are, they are developable, but when you get to provision of roads, who were all the things that are required, just economically, they're not.
They're not going to develop as a whole parcel.
So we just observed over the past 30 years, what the average yield is on L1, L2 parcels, and it typically is around 70% of what the actual land use or density would allow. I will say that the M1 and M2, which are the multifamily residential, if they actually get built as multifamily, tend to actually yield the density that they're allowed. Unfortunately, we do, fortunately, unfortunately, depending on your opinion, that multifamily can also be developed as single-family, which again, yields a lower density. One last thing, we do have parcels that have one home on it, that are 20-acre parcels, that that home gets demoed, now you can build. So for the pieces that are five and 10, there's also pieces out there that are deemed developed that have one or two homes on them right now.
They're underdeveloped, essentially.
Correct. So I don't know if they would wash, but they certainly account for one another.
And just, just to answer Ryan's question, we netted out 1,487 acres roughly of wetlands from the analysis.
1,400 was taken out as wetlands.
1,400 acres, 1,460, or 1,486.8 acres.
To be exact.
Which led to a balance, I believe, Chris, of 40,000 acres?
So yeah, of the, of the roughly 43,000 acres that we looked at. Yes, sir.
Welcome, name and address.
Yeah, Dot Sebastian. I kind of like to separate my comments into, into two, because this document is an extremely good document related to planning on what you need to do within the county. Expanding the urban service area is not really just a planning system. We have to talk about the utility side of that as well. The county certainly has a need, because the Oslo Road Exchange is a train coming at you extremely fast, run by Bright Line, they don't slow down. And at the time that that thing opens down there, if you're not prepared, when the developers come in, you're going to be in trouble, so you have to do that. I agree with that 100%. But the urban service line is not the driving factor in that. You can do the urban service line expansion almost any time. The problem that we see today, especially, I represent a parochial view of this, in Sebastian, we've got over 9,500 septic tanks in Sebastian that are within the basin management plan. That's the driving factor, Commissioner Irman, on whether you have to meet this new state standard or not. Not all the septic tanks in any river county fall within that, but a large number do. I'm, I'm not sure exactly, I think John mentioned yesterday to me what the number was, and I can't remember what he said, or it was, maybe it was Sean, it was, it was like 35,000 or something like that.
27,000.
Excuse me?
27,000.
27,000. So the 9,500 in Sebastian makes up probably about 45% of that. At $22,000 per septic tank, if we have to convert to the new tanks, and that $22,000 is an extremely low estimate, it's about $220 million for the city of Sebastian to do that. The cheapest way to fix that problem by far, even, assuming the capacity is there, and that's my, I just heard everybody agree the capacity is there to serve what's in the urban service line. Assuming the capacity is there, the cheapest way by far is to connect those properties to the county utility. It's not going to cost us 400 million, which is probably, by the time we say we want to convert the old septic tank to the new one, and the contractors figure out that it's a state mandate, they're going to be $40,000 a house, not 25 or 22. So 400 million dollars or so to convert those septic tanks, and I don't know what Sean would come up with on an estimate to run the infrastructure that's needed in order for us to connect those, those units. There, there may be some that we can use a step on, step system on, because they're not conducive to being in, using lift stations, there's all kinds of ways, and engineering stuff, it needs to be done with that. But as far as Sebastian's concerned, probably the cheapest way on our residents, and that's my main concern, is, is to connect that to utility. Moving this urban service line before we service those properties that are within the current urban service line makes no sense to me. Moving the urban service line as part of a community development planning process makes a lot of sense to me. So it's, it's kind of a dichotomy and thought, dichotomy and thought here. If it makes sense to move it for community development processes, and for urban service development processes, that's one thing, but we're leaving out large proper, pieces of property that are currently within the urban service line and not serviced. The minute that you move the boundary out Oslo Road, you're going to get developers reserve capacity. They're going to do it as fast as their lawyers can walk in the door, because they know there's not enough capacity to service the people in it, and the new people, without building new plants, without doing the stuff that needs to be done. So we need to consider the possibility of changing the way this is taken care of, so that the current people are serviced, before we make this, open this up to the new businesses in the expanded area. It just makes no sense. So we're looking, we're looking at a relatively large investment. So, I mean, my, my feeling, and my, my position from the Sebastian Council perspective, just one council member, is that I can't throw upon the residents of Sebastian $35,000 assessment per house, and bankrupt 25% of the people in the city, and have 20% of the houses go in foreclosure, because they can't make their house payment anymore. That's something we have to think about, as elected officials. We have to think about that. So what happens if we, if we just say, well, we're going to worry about it later? DEP comes in and condemns 20% of the septic tanks in Sebastian, which they're going to start doing. They condemn them, we have to convert them to the new system. It's now too late to try to plan on running the infrastructure to connect them to the current, to the central system, so we have no choice but convert them to the new system. And everybody in town that does septic tanks realizes they can charge an arm and a leg for doing that work, because it's being mandated by the state. So I feel like my fiduciary responsibility to the residents that I represent is to figure out a way to have this happen without that drastic move taking place. It's unacceptable to me as an elected official to potentially throw into a situation where a large number of our residents have to either pay for this assessment, or pay their mortgage, or buy food. So we have to come up with a way to do that. That's just, my, my feeling is that you should not move the urban service boundary without a concise plan on how to service those people within it. You can do your planning all you want, do it any way you want to do it.
Mr. Dodd, in, in all due respect, your residents are also our residents. Correct.
I'm, I'm not saying or not, I understand.
I know, but I also think that, that we need, when we start talking about the septic-to-sewer situation, we need to be very careful of not, of being accurate, right? So yes, there is a state requirement for 2030, but there is absolutely no way, and I think this board has said it multiple times, that we are going to be able to serve everybody within the urban service boundary anyway, just from a logistical perspective. And if we all, so there's going to be some residents that are going to have to upgrade their, their septic tanks, and our goal is to make that be the least amount as possible. But even if we do a septic-to-sewer project, there's an assessment and a cost to hooking up to county services as well, because our policy has always been that the current users of that system don't subsidize the work for the new users. So that expansion consistently across the board has been born, we try to get grants and state dollars and that kind of thing to take that cost down, but even if you hook up to county services, there's going to be a cost. The question becomes, to your point, which cost is less? But, I mean, the Health Department is here, which has some, in the past, done some work, and I know we're transitioning to DEP from an inspection perspective, but I don't think it's accurate to say DEP is going to come condemn people's houses and, and take them away from them for not converting to septic tanks.
They, they have a mandate by the state to inspect septic tanks.
Right.
When they condemn them under their mandate, they have a year to replace the septic tank, to fix it. All I'm saying is, and I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to, to make light of the fact that you guys represent Sebastian residents as well as the Sebastian Council does, not making light of that at all, I know that you do. All I'm saying is that, as, as an elected representative in Sebastian, my concern is Sebastian residents. That, that puts me at a much easier position than you are. You have to worry about the whole county, I have to worry about Sebastian.
I understand, and I think one of the things that's important, too, is this is the start of many, many more discussions, because, to your point, things have to go into the comprehensive plan to make it a holistic document that can actually be carried out. Part of that is zoning and USB. Part of that is going to be covered through Sean's Integrated Utilities Master Plan, but they, so they're all not happening in a vacuum. What's, what we've been trying to do is have these different studies run parallel courses, so when it's time to make those changes to the comprehensive plan, we can make all of them at once, and really address everything, so we're not just picking at things and having this area being addressed, but that one's still lingering and not, because they all, like you said, need to be integrated. So I appreciate your comments, and that's definitely our goal as we move forward.
All right.
Thank you. Julianne, and then Rusty.
Julianne Price, Health Department, and Vice Chair of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. I just want to speak in support of the five strategies, I think, I think they're good conservative strategies, in particular, and in relationship to AHAQ Strategies Number Three and Five that pertain to affordable housing. Can tell you, this morning, we had an AHAQ meeting, and discussed this meeting this afternoon, and generally, every, all the representatives and attendees were supportive of the recommendations. So just wanted to add that in, and thank the county for doing the study, and I think these are all good, needed recommendations, in particular, affordable housing, because as you saw, that was one of the top issues identified by residents in our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rusty Benak, 6075 Atlantic Boulevard, Mirror Beach. I want to thank the commissioners for allowing us to get up and speak today. I'm probably one of the oldest in the room that was actually born and raised in the county. My family's been here a long time, my kids are here, love the county, and I'm certainly for responsible growth. I think a lot of the, the points that were made on the recommendations, we do need affordable housing. I mean, I think we all know the school teachers, I have, I'm still in the, heavily involved in the citrus business, and have employees that would love to have a house that are renting now, that are struggling. So we did, the county does need affordable housing. There's also, you know, the urban service area word has been a dirty word since, for a long time. I mean, as I said, I've been up in I mean, as I said, I've been up in front of the commission thirty, forty years ago discussing the urban service area. And, you know, there again, it all becomes about responsible growth. We all love this county and want it to not turn into South Florida. But at the same time, we have a need to continue to supply housing for the people that are coming into this county, affordable housing, and, and grow where we need to grow. And I'm not here, I'm here more to talk about maybe some of this transitional, I say transitional, land that does border the urban service area, where we have four-lane roads, utilities, schools, churches. And yes, I have property along those areas. And, you know, my, my grandfather always said farmers never make any money farming. They make their money down the road selling a piece of land. And so, a lot of truth to that. And, but personally, there's a lot of citrus growers here. You know, the state used to grow sixty-something million boxes of grapefruit. We're down to probably after the hurricane, less than a million boxes now. The commissioner mentioned the orange blossoms that we used to smell. Well, I've planted three-hundred acres in the last year and a half of new citrus. And I've had to sell land in St. John's to conservation easements, five-hundred acres to help fund staying in the citrus business. And we've also planted some biofuel trees. So, the farmers are still doing their part to keep this county somewhat agriculture. But at the same time, that takes money. And if you go out west of town to St. John's, you see solar fields, which breaks my heart. I mean, I know that's maybe good down the road, but it used to be beautiful citrus groves. And so, it takes money to preserve agriculture in this county. And sometimes that takes selling a piece of land and getting a return on that land that you can continue to farm. So, up and down Lateral A, we used to have some beautiful groves. They're not there anymore, but we still have the parcels of land that border the urban service area, cleaning up that urban service area line where it jogs and up and down Sixty-Sixth Avenue. And, you know, is, is certainly important to me. And it, I don't know, back when it was originally made, the urban service area line, why some of those areas were jogged out. Sixty-Sixth Avenue probably should have been the line at the time, instead of having a cutout there, but that's history. But, you know, I'm just here to, you know, ask the commission to at least these areas. We, we talked about some bigger areas, but cleaning up some of these smaller areas where it makes sense, where we already have infrastructure. As you mentioned before, there's still several parcels that are large parcels that make sense for development that aren't a ten or a five. And just so everybody knows, I just broke up two pieces of property into five-acre parcels. And because that's what belonged there, along Sixty-Sixth Avenue and Fifty-Eighth Avenue. Segovia Lakes there, I mean, I live a quarter of a mile from there. And when they came in to develop that, I did not oppose that because it was on Fifty-Eighth Avenue on a major artery where growth and infrastructure belongs and is already there. So, I would just like to ask the commission to give consideration to these areas that do border the urban service area, where we already have infrastructure and capacity to allow us to expand that urban service area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Welcome, name and address for the record.
My name's Peter Robinson. I live at three one five Gray Twig Road, Vero Beach, Florida. I was here when the urban service district was determined, so I know the story. And the story was real simple. We had lots of meetings, and the county came up with their plan for an urban service district, which actually ran all the way out to I-95. And back in those days, you had this like community development guy up in Tallahassee. And he said, that's not acceptable. And so, he basically went around and anything that had a citrus grove on it, that's outside the urban service district. So, when you hear people talking about, why the heck do we got these properties like that? Because everybody knew that if you had a citrus grove, that was agriculture, and you had to protect the agriculture, and everything else, you know, they might let it in. And it was a totally screwed up deal. And then, I was at the meeting where basically the, the state put the word down and said, you will approve this plan or you will never get any more money from the state. And the guys who were sitting in your seats, they didn't have a choice. They had to vote to approve that plan. So, that plan was not an Indian River County plan. That plan was a state bureaucrat in Tallahassee, a group of those guys. And we've all heard about those guys, we've heard a lot about that in the last, in this presidential election. And that's what we're, that's, that's, so you, you need to take some time and really look at this and try and create something for Indian River County. Because you're working on a platform that these guys are working on, and they don't know the history. And they just think, oh, we got to live with this. And I can, I had, we had the same problem up in Orange County, they, they pulled the same stunt up there. You know, the state ran around and did it, so that's what you're working with.
That's when you had the Department of Community Affairs and all that review process.
All those guys.
I remember that.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the backstory, appreciate that. Anybody else?
No, go ahead, please. Robert Votan, five eighty-two Breakwater Terrace, Sebastian, Florida. Mr. Dodd, thank you very much for your comments on the situation in Sebastian. Definitely agree that that is something that's going to be coming down the pike that we need to address. I'm not sure that this is the meaning to address it, but that, that is something that, that, as a citizen of Sebastian, we are concerned about. One of the questions that I have is, it seems like there's a cart and a horse here. And the, what triggers what? So, there's a lot of planning that has to go on here in order to expand any kind of a USB to where it would include lands that are developable and, and for expansion. And if you approve the USB to expand, that triggers the need to expand your services, and that triggers the need to have capacity increased and plants built and those kinds of things. Or, do you plan to go ahead and increase those? Do you put the budget in to increase those services and those plants and those things? And then expand the urban service? It seems to me like by going ahead and expanding, and as Mr. Robinson said, going ahead and fixing that, that, those areas around Sixty-Sixth where they were just cut out, that was dictated to, you know, Indian River County back then. But if you don't go ahead and make that trigger, then those facilities will never, they'll just kick it down the road. And, and it won't ever get done properly. So, you have to stay ahead of it, but it seems to me like it's, what triggers that is the actual expansion of, of those areas. So, am I incorrect in that thought process?
Are you incorrect in the thought process that we need to figure out capacity before we move the urban service? What triggers?
What triggers the actual movement of, of building the facilities and adding the police stations and the fire and everything? Is it because you've expanded it?
If you have an urban service boundary, then you are required to have plans in place to provide services within that urban service boundary, whether that is septic and sewer, schools, because it's, it would impact the schools, too. Whether that's roads, whether that's transportation, sidewalks, parks, there are standards required for all that. So, they, they live on each other, they depend upon each other.
So, they have to actually, actually, it, it has to happen at the same time. So, if you decide to expand this, you also have to have the plan in place to build those facilities.
We do not have to have both of those at the same time, but we do need to have a plan to have a plan. We can't just move the urban service boundary and then sit there and say, ha-ha, we didn't do the rest of the deal and we're not going to, and that's the end.
Okay, so it seems like the movement triggers the plan. Okay, so I am correct in that.
They depend on each other. And where you move it needs to have some general understanding of what your capacity has the potential to be.
Correct. And once again, that has to do with densities and has to do with, with your underlying land use and your zonings and, and those kinds of things at the time, whether it's multifamily or, or not. The, the other statement is, is we all love to hear about affordable housing here. And it, I would love to know where that dollar amount is for affordable house. There just seems to be so many things that nowadays, in, in the environment that we're in, and I noticed some of the studies said that, you know, the environment was very important to preserve and to take care of. And I agree with that a hundred percent, but all of those things deter affordability. When the St. John's comes in and mandates that you can't do this and you have to do this. And, and the county mandates that you, you have to do certain things in order to have that land high enough up. And so, I lose so much of my land that we've purchased to storm retention and those kinds of things. It, it, it really is the detriment to what I would like to see of affordable housing. And so, having some kind of set aside, some kind of, you know, that would define what that is and how to achieve that. And, and it can't just be the developer who gives all. It, it, it would have to be the county that, and other, other participants possibly, that would have to come up with some ideas to, to making that more of an affordable area. Because the cost of land is the cost of land, and we, we can't get around that. And, you know, as soon as you move something into the urban service, the value of that land has now increased. And once again, that all gets passed on to the end user. And that's just economics. And so, you know, having some kind of a plan where maybe it's a joint capacity to do any improvements that go on to a required subdivision. So, that, yes, if it requires a turn lane, absolutely, that should be covered by the development. It's a single use, that's what triggered the turn lanes. But the additional improvements that are then required sometimes for intersections and roads and these kinds of things that developers have to do, gets passed right on to the consumer. And then, they pay impact fees on top of that. And so, now they're double, double whammied a little bit because there's both of those items being, you know, addressed on to a single home. The other thing that does is increase the cost of the home, which also increases the tax revenue. And the cost goes up there because they only have so much homestead that they can apply to that or transfer. So, some of these things are things that I would see, that I would love to be a part of and maybe addressing at some point in time to see how we can work together to get some of those costs down for affordable housing, even if we have to go and approve some kind of a smaller footprint that we would allow, maybe without a garage. Or, you know, some things that would go on there. Because if you have a eleven-hundred square foot house, or if you have a eighteen-hundred or a three-thousand square foot house, the cost of air conditioning, the cost of the electrical, the cost of all of those are, are going to be built into that. And it's hard to cut those out. And the cost of materials are the cost of materials and those kind of things. So, I would like to get some ideas and things.
Sure, and I appreciate those comments, they're really good. And the good thing is, is that you do have a representative, because I know you sit on planning and zoning. And there's also a representative of planning and zoning on our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. So, they have been part of the, some of these discussions as far as things and ordinances or LDRs that might be changed to address that. And I believe some of those are going to end up going, having to go through P and Z, through the public hearing process. So, you'll definitely have an opportunity to help shape and craft those policies if we decide to move forward with them. And I think we end up with some new appointments. You guys usually do who's appointed to which committee.
Right.
Like in December or January.
I think it is coming up, yeah.
So, that might be, maybe the, the planning and zoning appointee might want to, you know, let you be a part of it for a year. So, you guys are all kind of getting up to date, because we would love to have that, your perspective there as well. That might be an opportunity to.
Thank you, those were just a few things that I noticed from today, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just add that, again, this is, this is only a workshop today, there won't be a decision made. Second, the, the population by the firm was, you know, there's speculation, there's hard data to indicate that. The other thing is, this is thirty-four years old. And just because we adjust the USB in the next few months, it's not like we flipped a switch and everybody's coming. We have mechanisms in place to control that, to make sure that those of us that, you know, enjoy what we have and what we've had, that can still be under the county's control to some degree. So, let's keep that in mind. The only thing that we do know today is that I-95 and Oslo is coming. So, that's the only fact that we know today, it's coming. It's not a dream any longer. So, let's keep that in mind when we have our discussions and make our decisions.
Okay, awesome, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Pete Sweeney, Block and Scarpus, six oh one twenty-first Street. First of all, thank you to the commission. This has been something that's been four decades essentially in the making. And it's, it's a hard task because it's a huge balance between the quality of life and the long-term survivability of the county. Certainly, nothing can live if it doesn't grow. And that's what we're talking about. So, how do you manage that? How do you plan for, as Commissioner Ward just said, the next twenty, thirty years? So, thank you for starting. This is the beginning of a process, but there are some key points that have already been mentioned, but also some that haven't been mentioned. And one of them is this, the USB limits growth across the board. And virtually, the entirety of this presentation and discussion has been about residential development. But there will be no commercial, there will be no industrial, and there will be no institutional growth if the USB does not change. You will not have a new hospital, you will not have industrial development, you will not have commercial development. So, it, it's more global, residential certainly is a very important aspect of this exercise. But it's much bigger than that. And if you talk about the benefit to the community of an increased tax base from light industrial or commercial or institutional versus the draw on services, there certainly should be a focus on those additional benefits, not only to the county, but to the residents. To follow that, the environmental concerns universally appreciated. And keep in mind, development can still occur outside of the USB. Virtually, everything would be at one to five, and those will be on well in septic. And you could not stop that. That does not solve the problem, the health of our lagoon, our waterways, the efficient use of our utility system, which I'm sure Mr. Liski would tell you. You don't ever want to get a capacity, but you want to be as close to efficient as possible. Like any machine, the more efficiently it's working, the more return you get per user, per, per ERU, per daily efficiency unit, whatever it is. So, you want to be at a ninety percent capacity if you can. And the way to do that is to bring more users on. Again, whether they're industrial, commercial, or residential developments clustered in smart growth. A third part is allowing the USB to be controlled by the county and move to meet the needs allows the county to maintain the growth management policies and not be dictated by anybody else, whether it's the state, whether it's a new city municipality that's created, whether it's a current municipality that you border. You have the ability to control that, and I'll talk about a specific example in a minute on eighty-second. And a last part that, that's just mentioned is impact fees. Impact fees are by definition designed to be paid for the future growth of a agency, a city or a county. That, that's statutorily what they are. The county's impact fees, generally speaking, are about ten thousand dollars, maybe more, for a single-family residence. Of course, there's tiers. And I'm not even talking about the commercial basis for it. But at ten thousand, a residential unit and approximately forty thousand available, that's four-hundred million dollars in impact fees that the county would receive to pay for, and that's actually, the ten thousand is actually exclusive of the utilities' impact fees that the county charges. So, it's probably higher, closer to fifteen thousand per home. So, you're talking closer to six-hundred million dollars in availability to increase schools, roads, utilities, parks, libraries, all of the things that make this community incredible. And by utilizing that and planning for the future, while allowing for development to pay for itself, allows this commission to continue to have growth management control and actually places the burden on the people that want to develop. A last part of that is, just because, and I have not heard anything contrary to this, just because the USB moves doesn't mean that that... just because USB moves doesn't mean that that AG1, or that A1 or A2 parcel suddenly now is rezoned to RM10. You will still have the ability to control the future within the policies and ordinances that you already have for those growth procedures. So from my perspective, of the things that were presented, there are three things I would suggest to you to look for. The Oslo corridor is absolutely essential. There are essentially four roads in the entire county that run north to south, or east to west. Oslo, you can get all the way to the river. You can't get across, there's no bridge, but you can get from there virtually as far west as possible where there is development. Route 60, straight line, all the way. 82nd Avenue, which is already programmed through FDOT to be expanded significantly and is in the design phase, as I understand it, will be expanded. And 66th Avenue. Those four arterials, and, and the suggestion of how Oslo is sort of outlined in a corridor is excellent. I would strongly suggest that that same pragmatic approach makes sense for 60, Route 60, for 66th, and for 82nd as north-south main roads, where you could include them, have developers understand that's where the county wants to have development. And then as things move to the periphery of those areas, they may stay smaller developments. They may stay at one per acre or two per acre. But we have competing initiatives here. The number one concern was environmental concerns, and the number two concern was to have low density. Those things are contrary to each other. But I believe you can accomplish both by utilizing what you have as a beginning roadmap and taking that, tasking staff to present you with finite ideas to achieve those goals. I'm very appreciative of the time, the effort that's gone into this, and I look forward to seeing the next steps in this process. So, thank you.
Thank you. Richard Bieloski, 685 Reef Road. I am the land use chairman of the IRNA, but I want to make it clear, I'm speaking for myself, because we have not had a chance to discuss the, the report today and the implications. But I think, to me, I, I was happy to hear the report, because what's proposed is incremental and common sense. And when I heard that we can meet the population goals of 2050 currently, that at least tells me we have time to talk about this in a very considered way. I mean, 90% of the institutional memory in this room is Joe Erman and Peter Robinson, who I think has left. So, you know, it's somewhat diminished. I mean, even, even to the point where, you know, if, if Chris Bolter were to call me, I haven't updated my outlook, my caller ID says Bob Keating. So, you know, it's, it's hard to catch up here, but move, Oslo Road, I think that makes sense. What, what Pete Sweeney just talked about, I think it's something that I can't quite metabolize sitting here, but it's part of the long-term conversation we have to have. The thing about the preference for suburban versus urban, to me, the way that was asked was a leading question, because, you know, if you'd asked that question as, do you like suburban development, or do you like sprawl? I don't know what the answer would have been, but, you know, if you ask somebody, do you like sprawl? No. Do you like density? No. And that adds up to hitting the problem and hitting the solution at the same time. So when I hear we have room within the boundaries right now to accommodate growth, I think the one thing that we could add to that in a longer-term conversation is increasing density for affordable housing, because that is the critical need. Everybody knows that. Attainable housing, affordable housing, whatever you call it. Putting it outside the urban service line, to me, is a fantasy, because the expense of developing land outside the line is greater than developing land inside the line. And I honestly do not believe that people really know the difference between eight dwelling units per acre and 20 dwelling units per acre. Certainly, the rental market doesn't recognize that. Nobody would say, oh, I'm renting this for more because it's eight dwelling units per acre. 20 dwelling units per acre, interestingly, is two stories on grade parking with 15% retention. We just don't know that, because we haven't seen those examples. So I think we have the opportunity inside the line to increase density in a longer-term conversation. To me, that's the critical conversation we should be having. And I will warn you that you can really easily get, accommodate that extra 50,000 population in a very unfortunate way. I've seen it happen, and that's called impacted housing. When people can't afford to live in an area, you start to see people living in a converted garage. You start to see three families living in a two-bedroom house. I've seen it in a number of communities. It's not a good thing in any way for law enforcement, for neighborhood stability, or anything else. So we, there are many incentives to create affordable housing. I'd like to see that be our focus. I think this conversation can go on long-term about our ultimate goals for, for expanding the line. Where, the, the conclusion I heard was that there's no real rush to do that. It can be done in a very considered way. And one of the ways we can do that, I believe, is education. If we could, I think this workshop is a great idea. Actually, wish, wish the workshop had preceded the study, because then the, the Inspire group would have had, would have been inspired to look in certain areas. Because I think, you know, I'd rather see this be driven by resource management, environmental considerations, than public opinion, or at least uninformed public opinion. So I mean, I'm making the case here for creating informed public opinion about planning issues. You know, there are a lot of examples of cities in this country that have gone downhill and been brought back. There's a lot of examples of cities with rampant growth that have been stopped. There aren't a lot of examples about cities that everybody likes that have been able to maintain who they are and what they are. That's a challenge. But there's some very enlightened planners that would be, to my mind, great to have come and give presentations to us over an extended period of time, so we could make a very considered, long-term decision about where we're going. But I think this was, I, I feel very comfortable with, with Inspire's report, with the conclusion. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Jackson, welcome.
Hello, everybody. My name is Kelly Jackson. My address is 7950 66th Avenue. I'm on the north end of 66th on the east side. Basically, the, the fairgrounds is our backyard, pretty much. A lot of this, Chris, is going to be addressed to you here initially. Just for a little background, I know a lot of you guys know, the new administrator may not, but I grew up on the corner of 69th Street and 66th Avenue. My grandparents built the house in the 50s. I do not know what the regulations were back in those days, but it served as a farmstead that housed all of us. So affordable housing and senior living and food banks and all that wasn't needed. It was like a farmstead kind of environment, right? So that's part of what I'm advocating for, but my career has been in the health and wellness field. I'm 54 years old. Started in modern medicine and went holistic integrative in the last 22 years. So maybe you can appreciate and understand what I'm trying to represent, developing this less than five-acre parcel of agriculture land in Indian River County, which is very rare, if you can even find it, in this county, to represent a demonstration site of education and training of how we are living organisms, and we have to factor that in, and how this demonstration site is going to model how so many concerns are touched on by allowing land to be used in this way. So, Chris, one of the, the things I wanted to start with, with you is, are you aware and did you consider that 66th Avenue, that if you went, if you went, let's see, south of 20th Street, Route 60, back in the day, used to be Monroe Road, now, you know, north is, well, I called it Lateral A, I don't know, and it's also known as Citrus Highway. I don't know the, the whole thing, or, is concentrated with a lot of small farms. In, in Indian River County, I believe that's the most concentrated, maybe outside of Felsmer. I don't really know what Felsmer has for small farms out there. So I don't know if you were aware that a lot of small farms are off of that road still?
Are you trying to see if they were included in the study?
Yeah, I'm trying to, when he was gathering his information and things, I'm just wanting to make sure he's, he was aware of this information, because I am advocating for small parcels of land for agriculture in this town, because the USDA created a new office after the pandemic hit.
Ms. Jackson, just as an FYI, we're talking about things within the urban service boundary, and I think where you're talking is outside the urban service boundary.
But I think you're talking about it like changing it or something, aren't you?
Well, the information that went into the study related to the, to the zoning and uses inside, we are having potential discussion about yes or no, moving it, or what, everybody's, we haven't really gotten there yet, but to the extent of the information that was used in the study, it was related to what was inside.
Okay.
And how, and maybe the question needs to be, how much agriculture was inside the urban service boundary? Ms. Jackson advocates a lot for ag uses, urban ag, and small homesteading, so that's why she's asking.
Absolutely, and I appreciate the question. I believe we met at the, one of the workshops, too.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you for attending that. But yes, you're correct, Chair. Our analysis was primarily focused on the property within the boundary and its ability to accommodate the, the population through 2050. We recognize that there are many small farms, five-acre parcels, you know, smaller pieces of property that are owned by smaller owners, individual owners, that are outside the boundary. And our, our recommendation didn't necessarily recommend, you know, changing that part of the study. But there were a few pieces of property that are within the urban service boundary today that do have agricultural uses. It was a very small percentage of the existing land use that we evaluated. So to answer your question.
Well, I just want to make sure that, that you're aware, since you're like a consultant advisor or whatever for the group, and that the public knows, because the pandemic hit, a global pandemic that was a health crisis, and now there's food security issues and environmental justice issues, there's so much coming down the pike. But the new office through the USDA is Urban Agriculture and Innovative Producers, and they're recognizing urban ag as small as one-eighth of an acre. At the North County meeting you had, I didn't see urban ag being represented at all or offered to the community in your presentation. I did, that's the only one I attended. If you changed it, I don't know. But a lot is, of the work that we're involved in, they're pushing for local and regional food, because big agriculture's been a model for a long time, which was a lot of import, export, wasn't local and regional food. And so I guess if you're looking at it from a model of like, the medical system, because we're regenerative agriculture, a lot of times the small farms maybe can't have as much impact, if you will, as a large monoculture operation, because they're not growing naturally with nature, and they're just large operations that require a lot of input with water and fertilizers and things like that.
Ms. Jackson, I think what I'm hearing you say is that you want to make sure that we are providing, as we move through these processes, some ability for ag to continue on small acreage, even if that's within the USB in a more urban-type environment. So maybe the best place for that is going to be when we move into some of the LDR changes and zoning changes, and making sure we accommodate that new kind of urban homesteading movement into those requirements. Because I, I think this study is a little bit more global and umbrella than where you're looking for some of those more specifics.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess if I could just kind of put it in a bubble, from a perspective of, like, instead of expanding our medical needs, if we had healthy ecosystems and local and regional food, and we wouldn't need the food bank models for food insecurity, again, affordable housing and senior living, it just can touch on a lot of things on one parcel, if you will, of land, you know? The environmental sensitive considerations that you said you had was two things. It was water bodies and.
Wetlands.
Wetlands. I want to make sure you're aware that there's a new BMAP area, because we happen to be in it. It's new, through F DAX, Best Management Agriculture Practices. Are you aware of that as well, for your environmentally sensitive stuff?
We did not include that in our analysis, in terms of the property within the urban service area.
The county is aware of the BMAP and the BMAP requirement.
Okay, well, I didn't know he knew, because he didn't mention it. And I think that's it.
Okay.
But thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I always appreciate your comments. Anybody else? Chris?
I just wanted to make a clarification, just so that everybody knows, so that Eric and I know, when people are asking us questions, that's actually Eric Rash from Inspire, and my name is Chris. So we know who's asking questions, who can answer them.
Okay. Anybody else in the public? I like that fancy handle on there.
Yeah, it's loaded, too.
I bet.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Councilwoman, Madam Chairman. I'm Joseph Paladin. I've been here for a lot, a long time. And I've, I'm a developer, builder in previous life. I'm chairman of the Urban Service Line Awareness Committee, and we've had several meetings discussing this. Let me bring up a couple of items. First of all, what Mr. Garofalo said is absolutely correct. It's almost not financially feasible to develop a 10-acre or a 20-acre site, because it costs so much money that it makes the lots not even sellable. And secondly, it's hard to meet the specifications that the county wants to see. Now, being part of the Indian River Association, one of the things we say is, we like to control growth through quality, not quantity. Quality growth is good. Quantity isn't the answer all the time, to quality. And going forward, one of the worst types of development is something that you might be on the verge of, it's called infill. It's where everything's developed around you, and then you have a five-acre piece that you, you live on. You say, well, everything around me's got three acres, you know, three units an acre. I need three units an acre. So when you start doing infill, that's bad development. And if we keep developing, leaving these 10-acre sites and 20-acre sites, you run into a problem down the line where you're going to have to start having infill. It's like Commissioner Lord said, too. One of the other things I want to bring to your point is knowing what you can do with your land in the future. Sometimes it makes it worthwhile to keep your land, gives you something to look forward to in the future. If you know, well, if I wait 10 years, I'm going to be able to do this, I'm going to be able to do that. Well, then, you, you hang on your land. It's worthwhile for your family and your, your, you know, your inheritance and what have you. So, you know, having that future site gives you something to hang your hat on. If you don't know what's going to happen in the future, it's hard to hang your hat on the future. And then as far as the urban service line, how we move it, I suggest that we move it in phases. We can't move the urban service line after I-95 or anything like that. There's no way we can afford to run infrastructure. There's no way. If we do it in four or five phases, then we can intelligently run the infrastructure. So like, you know, my first phase, in my opinion, would be 66th Avenue, seeing as how there's already development in that area. And so if you have a, and then you straighten out the urban service line, it's still like it's now. Now it's all in and out, 58th Avenue. Nobody even really knows what the urban service line is. But if we had a straight line, that would make it more financially feasible to run infrastructure. And then that would give people something to know what they're going to have in the future. So if the first phase is 66, second phase is 74, third, fourth, fifth phase, they know the longer they hold on to their property, the value's going to be there. So that, that, that is a good way of giving people hope for the future. And in reality, as far as moving the urban service line, you know, every time there's annexation, you sort of move the urban service line. And annexation, depending on how it's done, you move the urban service line. And the county doesn't really benefit from that. We don't benefit from that. You know, of course, we have county roads and what have you, so you've got to consider that. If we move the urban service line in single phases, not a big jump to I-95 or anything like that, then you intelligently can run the infrastructure, and then through developers' agreements, you can make development pay for itself. See, I can make development pay for itself. But what I can't do, I can't make growth pay for itself. Two different things. I mean, a developer comes in and buys a piece of property, I make him run the infrastructure, I make him put everything in, and then impact fees. He has to pay impact fees on the property, he's put the infrastructure in. So you can't say development don't pay for itself. It does. But growth is different. See. See, impact fees will pay for the fire station. It won't pay for the firemen that work there. Impact fees will pay for the school, school. It won't pay for the school teachers. That's growth. So that's the difference. That's something you have to consider going forward. So that's something that we, you know, we've always said, but it has to be looked at and explained. But development can definitely pay for itself. And then as far as affordable housing, when the money's on the table, that's when you make your deal. That's when you negotiate. So if a developer wants to come in here and develop a piece of property, we can put it as part of that plan, well, we'd like to see 15% of the property developed as affordable housing. That's part of the cost of going forward, just like infrastructure. And so that can give us affordable housing. You can't just take a piece of property and say, oh, we're going to make all of those house housing here. Sooner or later, that becomes a slum. So that's why I like inclusionary housing. I like to put affordable housing within a development where there's other types of housing. So if we have developers, through developers' agreement, agree to make a certain percentage of their housing affordable, then that developer's actually eating up a lot of that cost, not the county, not the people that live here. So through the developers' agreement, we can do affordable housing and we can do infrastructure and we can make new development pay for itself. We just have to intelligently do it. We've done it in the past and I've done it in the past, so I know it can be done. So that's my input.
Thank you. All right. Before anybody else, we were going to take a five minute break. Did you want to add something? Okay.
I just want to contradict my good friend Joe here because infill is not a bad word. I, I made a career out of doing some very fine infill projects that won a lot of awards. And I've never, and I've done a lot of affordable housing and I've never created a slum. I, I think that what we need, I, maybe what Joe says about moving the line to 66 over time may make a lot of sense. But again, I go back to what I said. We don't need to rush to do that right now. We need to look at it carefully and with consideration. But you know, infill for affordable housing, increasing density, those are good things. Large parcels, I mean, developers like Pulte, Ryan Holmes, Lennar, they don't like little parcels, that's for sure. But there are plenty of developers who can develop smaller sites. So I, I don't think we need to panic that we're eliminating all possibilities for developers. That's all I wanted to add. Sorry, Joe. We're still friends?
Oh, yeah, we're always friends. We fill in greenwood.
All right. We are going to take a five minute break.
It is. We're all anticipating your return.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay.
You lost some people.
I did lose some people. Well, it's mid-afternoon nap time, I guess. Okay. So, I think that was all public comment unless there's anybody else from the public that wants to say anything? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Jackson.
Sorry, there was just a couple of things. I'm not sure because if, am I putting it out there? In this planning, I don't know if our county is considering tiny homes. I know Brevard County was doing tiny homes.
We do allow tiny homes already within our existing regulations and container, shipping container homes.
Oh, awesome. And I know the, I keep bringing the small farms up, but I'm just wanting to make sure that we're paying attention to the small farms that are here because like our farm and the farm to the east of us and our deep flow wells had zero water coming out of them one day and we had the county come out because that water plant's right there. So, I don't know what it has to do with. But Mr. Van Antwerp had that problem in the past.
Yes, and we did work with them and it had that. We have addressed that and fixed it.
So, I just want to make sure that these farms are being, you know, when people are, you know, putting, you know, new projects or whatever and that that's being looked at. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Yes, sir.
Just one more.
Sure, no, you're fine. That's what we're here for is to listen.
I'm Tom Cowan. I'm president of Flying Ranch's homeowners west of town.
Yes, sir, welcome.
We are flying airstrip out there and just west of I-95. So, obviously, our community is against expanding west of I-95, the urban service boundary. We've been there for 35 years and we do not want to have our airport shut down because of encroachment of houses or businesses around that area. I think Vero Beach in Indian River County is a very unique county and we are one of the few counties in South Florida that still has some agricultural land and space around it. So, it's, we have a real unique character for our county. And I would hate to see expansion going west where the next thing we know, we have development all the way out to E-Haw. So, that's my only comments. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here. Anybody else? All right. Commissioners, one of the things that we do need to do today is give our input on the recommendations for consideration. Again, these are recommendations. We can tweak them. We can endorse them. We can not endorse them. We can change them. We can go in a whole different direction. It's our kind of time to give direction to staff on what we want them to spend time crafting for the comprehensive plan updates. One question I do have, though, is Chris or Ryan, whichever. What is the comprehensive plan timeframe? Like, if we were to make a recommendation today that we wanted to look at Oslo more or 66 or whatever, what's the timeframe in which that would need to happen to be included in the comprehensive plan update?
So, if we incorporate it into the year process, the year-based amendments are due October 1st. If we do not include it into the year-based amendments, we can submit a change anytime we like.
Okay. Is there a benefit or a drawback from one process to the other?
Generally, it's good to submit all of the amendments together because it's a one-fail swoop as the state takes a look at your comprehensive plan. Anytime you open the document, it's like opening and rehabbing an old house. They get another chance to take a stab at it. So, they can make restrictions or make changes or do suggestions or, you know, there's new reviewers. Every seven years, we have to update it. So, there's new reviewers in that timeframe for every reviewing agency.
Okay. So, really and truly, from a realistic perspective, we're trying to target an October year comprehensive plans of middle. So, if there are things that we want to see happen or not happen, those, that policy would need to be crafted and then public hearings if necessary and all that stuff kind of aligned with an October 1st perspective in mind.
Correct. And I would say that it would need to be to planning and zoning by the summertime, towards the end of summer, and then through, actually before that, because it does have to have, it's got review time as well. So.
Okay. And are some of the things that may or may not need to be done not included in the year and are just maybe LDR changes or ordinance changes or do all those have to go through the year process too?
No. The LDR changes do not have to go through the year process. So, those can be changed at commission level. Obviously, some of them correlate and go back and forth, but we can differentiate the ones that are a direct correlation with the comprehensive plan and pull those out and say it'll be pending comprehensive plan approval and we can set a date forward on that for adoption if Jennifer's okay with that.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure everybody kind of understood where we are in a very long process, which could be faster. It could be slower. It depends on what it is that we want to do. So.
We have 11 months with the switch.
Not me.
So, we have 11 months just short of, yeah.
Yeah, for the whole thing to be completed. So, if you back everything up.
That's not a very long time considering what has to be done, the assessment.
Correct.
The staff background work as well.
Um, okay. So, I, we have five recommendations to kind of talk about. I, I'm gonna take them a little bit out of order if that's okay because I think some of them are, go together and some of them are easier. So, Policy 4 is for bisected properties. I believe there is 15 properties that this impacts where the urban service boundary where it was drawn, was drawn through half of the property. The recommendation is to include the entirety of that property within the urban service boundary, kind of as a cleanup for those 15 properties. So, that seems to me to be a bit of a no-brainer. I don't know if it is for everybody else, but are there any comments or is there some consensus we can come to on that particular?
No, insofar as if it doesn't contain affected parties. As I said, as we heard from our representative from Flying Ranch as well as Ms. Jackson, that's the only concern that I share.
Okay. I think most of these are on the eastern side.
And I don't believe there is an effective parties, but I would be concerned about that. Look, at the end of the day, there are going to be winners and losers with this. And I, I don't want that to happen in our desire to move the urban service line to satisfy one of the other requirements to offset somebody's livelihood or their livability or affordability in return for new affordability or in exchange for expansion and growth.
Maybe what we can do is ask staff to bring us back a more detailed list and kind of initial policy with a map to include those bisected properties in the USB. So, that gives us, we're not doing it today, but it gives us some more information to make a final decision at a meeting where we're making decisions. Does that sound good?
And just remember that anything that you recommend today, it still has to go before planning and zoning and then ultimately you again to vote on whether you choose to adopt said ordinance or language.
Okay. So, there seems to be a general consensus to start working on the policy for bisected properties and bring that back. Okay. All right. I guess we, the rest of them are maybe not as cut and dry. So, we'll just start at the top. Targeted USB expansion. Commissioner Laura has talked, I think, and the other commissioners have as well about Oslo and I-95.
Absolutely.
I think what the proposal is in the study is to maybe do some, do more of a specific study in that corridor where we can look at what's going on, what we might want to see from an industrial versus residential perspective, how we also might protect the existing rural areas. My concern is I do think that that is a good corridor to look at. I think it has a lot of potential from an economic development perspective. But I am, I am concerned about some of the impacts, how we mitigate that. And I know we've had, we had a discussion in our meeting of the urban rural, like, and I say that as somebody, and maybe this is selfish, so I'll be honest. I mean, I live on Babcock Street in Felsmere. So, everything that's happening in Palm Bay and at that new interchange is kind of flowing down all that traffic and different things. So, as somebody who's kind of living through that, I want to make sure that we are taking into consideration the changes that we might do and the impacts that'll have on existing lifestyle choice, you know, and living arrangements.
Well, expanding that area is, most certainly, it's an automatic thought. I'm sure it's unilateral. The concern is that it's a little bit more off the beaten path. Therefore, it's going to need some mixed uses in there. You're going to need to have infrastructure to support the residential. You're going to need not only commercial, you're going to need shopping availability. People are not going to be traveling some eight miles to go up to the store. I'm not saying that it has to be mega stores, but you're going to need some sort of support infrastructure within that area. So, it will have to be looked at accordingly with compatible use with the adjoining area, which is agriculture. I do understand that, but it needs to be carefully done to incorporate the, all three uses.
And I, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but the overriding theory of development is that residential development doesn't necessarily, like, it uses a lot of service versus what it gives you back in tax base. Whereas industrial or commercial uses less services and puts more tax base on the books, for lack of a better saying.
That would be correct.
Something like a distribution center.
Right. Well, no, I'm just saying, you know, we have, the, the USB, the study has proven that there is a lot of capacity within that for residential development for what we're kind of anticipating in the next 25 years. But I think there is a need for job creation and those types of oper, and I'm not saying a big distribution center necessarily. I mean, maybe it is a big project. But if every business, you know, was able to grow and some of our small businesses could grow out in that area, that would be just as, just as awesome, too.
And Madam Chair, if I could say something. And this recommendation, this one isn't very time-sensitive in the fact that, yes, it is time-sensitive for the interchange opening. However, with the award that will be coming, the next two meetings to BCC is the Economic Development Strategic Action Plan, it plays into finding what truly is the economy of Indian River County now. You know, we had, our last plan was updated about 12 years ago and COVID happened during then. So, it's a perfect time to take an analysis of this area. That's why, the way it's worded is a targeted USB expansion to include, you know, a corridor study, incorporating all of those details into it, capacity, you know. So, it's not necessarily that we have to have this done by October. This is something we can strive to complete, you know, in phases if we want to do an expansion in phases or if we choose to look at it more closely.
So, are you planning to, to include this corridor in that economic development action plan as a potential and then bring something back from there?
It was written that way that it was going to be studied, but it's completely up to the commission if you want a study quicker.
I think it should be done beforehand.
Okay.
I, I think that it would probably be viable to accelerate it now so we can make the most appropriate decision for our.
So, from a recommendation to staff, what I'm hearing from you guys is, yes, let's include this in the study for economic development, but let's look at, let's go ahead and take a deeper dive into what's going on in that corridor and what potentially could go on in that corridor. Is that an accurate statement? Okay. Perfect.
If I could just ask one question for clarification. Timeframe?
What is your suggested timeframe?
This week?
I know.
What's a reasonable timeframe? Because the, if we're going to include it in the economic development plan, that's kind of a, that's, we're just getting ready to kick that off. So, you're talking.
That's a nine-month study, which was similar to this study, which will include public charrettes and all of that. John, do you want to?
I was just gonna say, a more narrowed-focused study on the Oslo corridor. Looking at a couple of the vacancies that we have, it might be wise in order to accelerate that, either work with Inspire or put together an RFP real quick and try to get somebody on board to do it. I mean, I just don't want, Chris, you can tell me about the, share with the board about the workload capacity as it relates to the existing staff.
Yeah, we're, unfortunately, we're down some staff from my old position. Haven't backfilled it yet. So, it's generally me doing all the studies right now and partner with consultants and Ryan. So, the workload's kind of at its max.
Maybe we want to accelerate that.
And we are, we just hired a senior planner. I mean, we're actively recruiting. It just, there's that whole process. I mean, if you want to accelerate that study, you might want to do it through the, you know, partner with the private sector.
Commissioner Laura?
So, we, so what I'm hearing is we need a, he's asking for a timeframe for us for the USB. Also, it competes with the 10-1 of 25. And now I'm hearing that perhaps outsourcing, which I would be against, and then having, Chris, as it stands today, the only person, sounds like they could do that, and hiring somebody. I would be against hiring external private firms or whatnot. I think we've called enough grief over that over the last several months. I think we could put this USB together by April 1st and have it so they can paint their picture around whatever we have to. I think the public deserves it. I think Oslo is, is in need, the other folks that have an interest in that area. And I think we've drug it on long enough and it's time to make a decision. I would even go even as early as February 1. I know the holidays are there, but it's got to get done. And we, we have a tendency to kick the can and kick the can till the road ends. And I think it's time that we make a decision on this, give our package to Chris, and that way he can color around it.
Is it just over the Oslo portion?
All of it.
All of it?
All of it.
Well, when we couple with economic development and many factors, I could understand the thought process by the county administrator to look outside and have a consulting firm do it. I agree with you. I don't, I don't think we need that. Perhaps maybe we need to look at this at 18,000 feet and not have the economic element because I believe that's the driver set to the length and duration. And then it still has to go back and then we're just going to kick this can down the road. I, I think a, maybe a more brief and, and. I, I think a, maybe a more brief and isolated assessment of the area on what the compatibility could be would probably be more than ample for us to make the most appropriate decision.
We've already studied this, we've had workshops, and we've had, you know.
Let's still look at it.
Exactly, but, you know, I think we need to resolve this so the other private sector can do their planning as well.
When is the intersection scheduled for completion? I thought it was 2027, is that still correct, the interchange?
That's correct.
2027?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that makes it look like there's time, I'm not sure why we're rushing.
But the problem is with, with changing anything with urban services, and we do this, when is the next time we can do this?
We can do it at any time.
At any time, so we revisit this again in 2027?
Well, we can revisit it at 2027, we can revisit it at 2025, you know. My worry is to rush this targeted expansion, if we're going to do Oslo, we need to do it right. I've seen it unfortunately done wrong in other communities. I can just speak about Hammock Landings in Bravard County. The city of Palm Bay had that, and it was a huge loss to them because they didn't plan correctly. They lost it to the city of West Melbourne when they annexed it. It got de-annexed from the city of Palm Bay and then annexed into the city of West Melbourne. So I would love to see this done correctly and set up as a viable, both commercial and residential and mixed-use area. But I have to be able to study that. The actual urban service boundary study didn't get that in-depth into the Oslo corridor. I appreciate your advantageous approach, Commissioner Laura, I just don't think I would be able to do it by February.
When, when would be a reasonable time, considering your workload?
I could probably have it done by May?
I don't see that being a problem myself, May.
Yeah, it works.
I mean, and that, does that work for it to come back to us for discussion, is that what you're saying?
So actually have the corridor studied and have a corridor plan of what I can present to you guys, yes?
That doesn't include putting the, the USB to study to bed. We still have, you know, 66th Avenue, we've still got other areas of concern. So how do we wrap up the USB discussion for now, until the next five years, seven years, or what have you? How do we wrap it up now so our public knows this is what is being defined as the USB?
Well, I think the way we wrap it up, I mean, we're not going to wrap it up today.
Right, of course.
But the way we wrap it up is we have definitive timeframes of when decisions are going to be made. So there's, there's something that's tangible that they can hold on to. Right now, everything's kind of nebulous without anything really defined, because I don't think staff even knew where to delve into until we've had this discussion. So I know what you're trying to say, because there's a lot of speculation out there, and in speculation breeds chaos, and that's kind of what's going on. But I also agree that, and we've heard from plenty of people in the audience, that if we are going to move it, there's things to be considered, and I think that's going to take a little bit of time. But I think we can give some direction on what it is that we're thinking. I mean, it sounds like everybody up here is at least thinking that some kind of movement in that corridor makes sense, and they're interested in moving forward with. It might just be where that line makes sense and what looks like what in that area versus, I mean, residential-industrial mix, you're not going to put the residential next to the landfill, I would imagine, but that might, you know.
Might be a tough sell.
I don't know, though, I mean, I love the landfill, I might live there, but.
Chairman, are we gonna, are we gonna have further meetings like this in reference to not what we've talked about today, but maybe recommendations staff that were brought up today and expand upon those, or are we, we're done? Because I, I mean, I, I kind of agree with Commissioner Laura. I think we need to make a decision to give staff direction to say, this is where we need to go. And then I need to let them to tell me how long it's going to take to put that together.
Well, that's kind of what Chris just said, is that his recommend, if we want him to look at expansion in this area, because I will be honest with you, I don't think anybody's, I could be wrong. I personally am not ready to make a specific decision on where that line needs to be in the Oslo corridor without, so I can't give him specific direction today. But the direction I am comfortable with giving him is, I'm interested in looking at something in that area, it makes sense. Can you do what his job is, which is to look at all the planning and the long range and the short term and that kind of stuff, and give us a suggestion, our staff's recommendation is where that might be able, might make the most sense to be moved, and then we can decide how to tweak that, is what I feel like we're telling Chris today. And then he's saying he can have that done by May.
Right, no, I agree, I think what I heard, you know, we need to concentrate on immediate needs, clean up the boundary, future-friendly, you know, look at all aspects, not just residential, but look at medical, industrial, commercial, as to what we want to do and how we, and how we want to do it, and how we want to, what we want the future to be. I, I was just concerned about how we're going to do it and what the timeline that Chris and Ryan need to, to put this together and how they want to do it. I mean, and if they look at it and they say this is bigger than we can do it, maybe we need to get a consultant, I want to listen to the argument of why, but I just want to give them some direction to move forward.
I, I think that they are able to do it, but I do think what we need to be helpful and proactive with is, like Commissioner Laura said at the beginning, maybe a mile from the interchange, he mentioned a half mile. So those are the kinds of specific, like, we're not as excited about the mile, focus on the half mile, or whatever. I'm not saying that that's kind of what I heard. Or the whole giant block on each side, maybe we're only, you know, looking at the half block. Those are the kinds of suggestions that will help them bring back something that I think that they're looking for, us to give them as much information as we can today so they can bring something back that is what we want, so we can make a final decision and not just ask for more changes and perpetuate the process.
Madam Chair, can I frame this maybe in a different way?
Sure.
We know that the 95 and Oslo intersection is coming in, barring any major, you know, funding or something else, 2027 is the deadline. Can we focus on that area first and then perhaps consider additional discussions for 66, 82nd, smoothing out the line where it jogs? But can, can the direction be to focus in Phase 1 on Oslo and 95?
That is fine with me, is that fine with everybody else, or?
And just a reminder, Madam Chair, this is an advertised workshop, so it's not an action. We don't have any official actions we're taking, I think it's fine to give direction to staff. But if you want to actually vote on something, I recommend you put it on an upcoming agenda.
Perfect, perfect, perfect.
Madam Chair, that sounds to me like more of a phased-in USB. And I don't think that is what this last three months' discussion has been about. So I wouldn't agree with a phased-in USB.
Commissioner Fleischer, Commissioner Yeerman?
I'm okay with it, I, I think the, the most critical thought right now is the new threshold into, even though it's 2027, in, in expansion for services, is the new threshold into our county. And the gateway that is unknown. And if we want to expand and provide for the most appropriate environment for residential, commercial, I, I believe that we should put our focus in, in that one area. Again, we hear different talk, we can't talk with each other, but we hear within the community that there's a lot of folks that would like to see it straightened out. Again, we talked earlier about the affected parties and the unaffected parties, and did we speak with the right people? We don't know that, some people have not come forward, some people don't, some may not live here. So if that's the case, I think we could put the energy, my thought is, the main focus has been Oslo. Why not allow it to be a phase in then? Maybe staff can get it done quicker. Because again, the consensus opinion, direction, what you hear from out in the community is a straight line. It makes good sense, but by the same token, is that what we're going to do? Only we'll know what we're going to be doing when we know what's going to happen with Oslo. And I, I think that's a big tell and invitation to the future. I'm okay with Ryan's suggestion that do an Oslo first, I'm okay with that. But I mean, overall, I think, you know, we don't have to do anything to the USB according to Oslo, we don't have to do anything. But we need to look at what our needs are going to be, such as Oslo, and what our needs are going to be in other areas, such as was brought up, if we're going to have a medical node or something out on 60, let's say, where there's not services right now. Is that something we need to look at? So yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I think, I think there's still the overall big plan that, that, that people are interested in looking, looking and doing it. And I think we have time, I don't think this is something we need to rush to an answer, you know, by next week on everything. I think it's going to take a lot of planning as to what we're going to do, how we're going to do it, but I'm, I'm okay with everything.
Commissioner Moss?
I'd rather take the time and do it right. I mean, considering we haven't looked at the USB since 1990, I don't think we need to start splitting hairs now about what month it'll be finished or which meeting, you know, we're going to discuss it at. And maybe there's no way to know that, because you might not know until you actually start looking at it. I, I like the idea of that small area study to really take a close look at Oslo and what it should be. Myself, I don't think that intersection with 95 and Route 60, I, I don't think the county made the most of that. So I don't want to see a repeat of that. I would like to see Oslo and 95 much better planned than what we're looking at today with Oslo and, excuse me, with 95 and Route 60. And if it takes a little extra time to do that, I do not see that as a problem to take the extra time, I think we definitely should.
Do I give you guys?
Yes.
A direction, okay.
Not with a sort of.
All right, so inter-local service agreements is the next recommendation. Commissioner Fleischer, do you want to talk about inter-local service annexation agreement?
Can I speak on this for a second?
Yeah, you certainly can.
This unfortunately, I don't know if it can have a timeframe.
Oh, this won't, I was going to say, this is probably something that we really just need to ask the attorney to kind of look into and bring us back some information at a future meeting about.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you in a nutshell what they are, because I've, I actually in the last couple of years did a couple for some city clients. So basically, you know, Florida statutes governs annexations, and there's all these rules about where you can annex. It has to be contiguous, you can't create an enclave, et cetera, et cetera. These tools, these inter-local service boundary agreements allows that to be relaxed if the county and the city can come together and do some planning about where the, where the boundary might be for these annexations and how services are going to be provided. So it's, it's a lot of big questions that go into that, that maybe involve some long-term planning. I will say, I've recently reached out to Sebastian in Felsmere, City Attorney, and I have some meetings set up with them, so I'm certainly happy to introduce that, I think it's a really great tool.
I, I personally, we were on opposite sides the last time this came up from a county perspective, and they are hard conversations.
Right.
And sometimes they're angst-ridden conversations, but it never was really finished, it was kind of in its final form. I think Sebastian got the closest to adopting something in their comprehensive plan. But from a service delivery resolution perspective, I think, especially when we've had a lot of conversation here about water and sewer delivery, it, it's very, it can be a helpful tool. And it's, it's not saying that, you know, I just think that's a long, you're correct. It's going to be a multi-year conversation, if it even happens. But I think starting the conversation about service delivering responsibilities and maybe floating it in some of your meetings, that it's this kind of a topic of conversation and getting some feedback.
Okay.
Gives us, at least from my perspective, some direction on if it's something that there's an appetite for or not. No, you were going first, you had already.
Yes, no, and I agree, Counselor, good, good point. We're going to have enough complexities with the recent annexation and the dependency upon resources as it stands. So an ILA is most appropriate. I don't think we can go forward without it, with that understanding. So, point well taken. You know, again, when you were.
We're still friends, though, look.
You were in a different, yeah, but you were in a different environment at the time.
I was.
Now look what happened.
I know.
So we're, we're going to, we're going to be able to get through this. I just have to, you know, we, we have, look at between the home rule and the expansion and the consolidation of our resources. We need to have the best in understanding to go forward, so thank you.
Madam Chair. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Commissioner Moss and then Commissioner Laura.
Thank you, I think of the five recommendations, this inter-local service agreement is the single most important of the five. It might be the most difficult, I understand that, but I think it's the single most important, because as we started this meeting, one of the statements that was made is that currently annexation is determining the urban service boundary. So if we want to end that situation and control it in any way, shape, or form, you know, we're going to need these agreements, however difficult they are to determine. And I don't know exactly what happened, but I was reading the very brief history, and maybe Peter Robinson knows or Chip Landers knows what happened exactly. But evidently, it was, this was tried in 2007 and 2009, and not moved forward in 2009. And think about it, if it had moved forward in 2009, if we had, if we had standing agreements with Sebastian and Felsmere, then these annexations that occurred in both places since that time perhaps could have been done in a more orderly fashion, in a better coordinated and more cooperative fashion, you know, between the county and municipalities. So I think, I am sorry it didn't happen back then, but I, I think it's the key to everything, as difficult as it might be.
Thank you, Commissioner Laura?
Yes, Madam Chair, my question's probably more directed towards Administrator. In, in your previous experience with these inter-local agreements, and knowing what you know about Sebastian and Felsmere, obviously the USB can go forward absent these agreements. What is the temperature or the probability that you think we would actually get these agreements executed?
Well, I guess it would depend upon the willingness to negotiate, one. Number two, is the county willing to take a stand and say, we're going to prioritize the unincorporated, the existing capacity that we have on the existing unincorporated area? And notwithstanding the fact that you annex lands into the city, does it mean that you're going to go to the front of the line when it comes to the provision of our utility services? Because if you provide services for one area, it's coming at the expense of the county elsewhere. So there arguably could be a comprehensive plan policy put together that might talk about the prioritization of the provision of utility services.
So more than likely, they would be reluctant. So more than likely, they would be reluctant to agree.
Well, that might be true, but if the county is, if the, if the county is saying, I mean, we've got X capacity related to our existing area, and we're going to dedicate that, that capacity within that existing area, then, the unincorporated area, then there's, that's the challenge. I mean, otherwise, the tenants of the agreement, like in the instance of Sebastian, is if you request service, you also have to come for the agreement with a financing plan for that service.
Exactly. Exactly. And that's, it's safe to say that that, that those agreements would more than likely take longer than the USB would be to implement it.
The last time we had these conversations, obviously, it was in a bit of a contentious environment of annexations happening.
Right.
It took two years to, to kind of work out an agreement that was in a bit of its final form. And I can give you the backstory on that. The reason it was not finalized was the annexation, there wasn't, there wasn't a pending annexation. So it kind of went away because the problem trying to be addressed went away to be resurrected at a later time, but it went away then. So it was like, why continue to have hard conversations when we can just pretend that we don't need to? And here we are today. And yes, it would have been nice, you know. What it does do, though, Commissioner Laura, that I think is important, whether people, there's an appetite for it or not, is it clearly defines from a city perspective, at least in our county, what the county is willing to do or can do. Because right now, with some of the annexations that have happened most recently, the biggest discussion has been around this argument of if and when and how we may be required to provide utilities. So the agreement kind of calls out if, if this is the area that you want to have future annexations, you know, this is what we reasonably can do for utilities, and this is what you should expect. So at least from the people looking to be annexed perspective and the cities, they kind of know what to expect, and there's not this, we're going to do it and you're going to have to figure it out. The city of Felsmer had their own utility at the time, so, you know, the city of Felsmer wasn't necessarily, even though it's small, but conceptually, you can expand it. The city of Sebastian is in a different position because they don't have a utility currently. So they're the ones, I think, that, that end up the most tenuous position. And I think that's why we heard what we heard earlier, understandably. So it, it does call that out. It will take a long time, and it will be difficult conversations, and it may or may not, you know. But there's an art of negotiation to it, too. I mean, they want something, we want something. It kind of, you know, it was back and forth, you give a little area or not, that kind of thing. So what, and really and truly, there was one that was done. It was pretty much done. It just needed to be adopted. I know that was a long time ago, and people have changed and situations have changed, but even Sebastian's current annexation is in the area in which they had called out in their reserve area, I believe. So it hasn't changed that much, whether we think it has or not.
You were working for a place called Felsmer.
I was. I was part of that, March, March to the Sea.
That's what the Madam Chair meant when we were on opposite ends. I was here and she was there.
So I don't know, maybe Commissioner Laura, do you want to have the, ask the attorney maybe to get a temperature from the cities and we can?
She's got calls in with them, as I understand. So yeah, that would, that would be fine, but we also know that this will not stop the USB.
No, no.
Okay.
And I, I think it would be a separate process.
Right, if it, if it happens.
If it happens, yeah.
Madam Chair, if I may, on the inter-local agreements and stuff like that, I think, I think it's imperative we have inter-local agreements to work with. It is, I think it could end up even being part of the change on the USB as to what we service, what we don't service. You know, we have customers that are serviced by the city of Vero Beach. We do Felsmer, we do Sebastian. I think they're, they're all role players in this with regards to it. We don't know whether the city of Vero Beach is going in the future with all the stuff that they have planned, you know, it, it could affect it there. So I think it's important. I'm glad to hear that the county attorney is going to meet with their, her counterparts there, and maybe that could be a brief discussion. And I think it's imperative. I don't, I agree with Commissioner Laura. I don't think it'll always be an easy discussion, but I think it's a discussion we have to have if, if, if they're going to annex or this county is going to grow in whatever fashion that the, that the cities choose. And I think, you know, being that we're pretty much the provider of the utilities, we have to take the high road and make it, make the right decision as to where we're going to go. And they need to know that. It needs to be spelled out for them, what, what road might have to be taken, so.
Okay. Is that, keep going, okay. Fabulous.
Thank you.
All right. The next two items are related to affordable housing. Chris, well, one is a USB expansion for affordable housing. How is that, is that a policy that you want, or you want to see if we have any interest in that?
Yes. And then I would like, I would ask if the commission could consider them separately because.
Yes.
Both of the asks are, are pretty in-depth.
Okay. So USB expansion for affordable housing, thoughts, questions, comments, concerns? Do you maybe want to lay out what you guys, oh, go ahead.
As in many jurisdictions, with, with expansion, it could be made a, a development requirement that a certain percentage of any development be attributed to affordability. That is, if you can define affordability, what is affordability today? So it's, it's a reasonable cost, a reasonable cost. That means that many of the offsets for infrastructure have to be absorbed by the developer into the other homes as well, but specifically to carve out a section for affordability, I think that's how the urban service boundary gets moved for affordability, by virtue of application, not by more, just merely moving the goalposts. Because if you just move the goalposts, anybody who has property at this time and it's moved will quickly adjust their scale or their demand or their request for the price of the parcel. So it'll go from the existing low tax rate at, you know, 20% per parcel to, there goes the 80%. It'll happen within months if it's not done with agreements as to what development is in the area. So I think we have to focus in on that to ensure that we have affordability, if we can define affordability. Because it's happening in all across this great nation, and there's no reason why we should ignore the fact that making that a requirement for development is, is an appropriate thing to do.
Okay. I think that we can define affordability, at least through the SHIP program, define some of that stuff for us based on our county average median income.
Which comes.
And I'll clarify, as far as definition, I just, just meant as far as the.
Okay.
The cost of doing business.
Okay.
And, and the way things have changed and with, with insurance and impacts, it's very difficult to come up with that number that a young starting couple can move into, no matter what we do. But at least define it so that it gets reduced, so that there is a likelihood.
So what I'm hearing from you, Commissioner Fleischer, is if this were to be something that we explored, you would want it tied very closely to making sure that it was only for affordability, like there was some guarantee? Is that what?
But for, for all the expansion, I don't know if we can make that possible. I mean, you know, just, all right, let's just put the inexpensive living accommodations out west.
Right.
You know, I.
No.
I don't, I don't think that works. I think any development of a certain size should include living accommodations that are affordable, so that we have.
Well, interestingly, we did have that conversation at AHAAC this morning about including, including a policy that every development would have to have some kind of affordability to it. So we would be happy to bring that back as a recommendation to the board, but.
Well, we can't make that decision today.
Not today. I'm just relaying in a public meeting that we've had.
It sounds like an outstanding idea, Madam Chair.
But for this specifically, moving the USB for affordable housing, I don't think it's going to address the, it's not all the affordable housing tools. I think the intention is to have this be a tool.
That we could use.
That we could use, but you would also have affordable housing projects in other areas of the county.
As I discussed with the consultant on our one-on-ones, you know, I, I believe that we, we need to create that in order to get affordability, that merely moving, moving the urban service boundary is, even if we said it's only for that, we still can't accommodate, you can't make that requirement or promise or commitment. So it's most, most appropriate to have some rules and regulations that we have to do that, and then we can redesign it, and it goes to wherever it's got to go to, to come back. And then, then that the, the expansion of the urban service boundary will be able to provide affordable homes.
Okay.
Affordable housing.
Commissioner Laura?
Workforce housing, whatever.
Madam Chair, if I, if I could add that, you know, we're looking at a document that's 34 years old, and I'm pretty sure affordable housing wasn't involved in, in 1990. In fact, we probably don't even have a name for affordable housing in 1990.
Still don't.
So now we're coming up with a, a document that's 8,000 feet in the air, and I realize that affordable housing is a bullet. Also recognize and realize that we have and have had items in place throughout the county for affordable housing. Are we going to create a document now in 2024, 2025, it sounds, and we're going to specifically talk about affordable housing? In 15 years from now, somebody may be filing through our documents and say, what is affordable housing? Now, we know that's probably not realistic. We probably know that there's going to be an issue with affordable, affordable housing for, for decades. But should it be included in the USB is, is the overwhelming question. Even though it's a bullet, is it a sales point? Is it something that puts a little glitter on this thing to push it through? Don't know. Don't we already have with our development rules and policies on affordable housing? Are we going to modify those rules and policies because of the USB?
So we do have existing density bonuses. However, this was a suggestion as another tool that we could use. Now, we could not use this tool, and there is another tool, which would be number five, that could be used within the existing urban service boundary, and then that wouldn't cause any movement. And/or we could have this looked at at a later time, maybe 10 years down, five years down, a couple of years. It's all up to the commission.
That's my point. I don't have agree with what Commissioner Laura said. I don't know if we need to adopt a new policy through this. I think if it's a, if it's a, if it's an, if it's a good idea to expand the USB to where we're going to have affordable housing, maybe that's something we ought to look at individually or something, somehow. I, I don't know. But I think, I, I think we have to do something about affordable housing, but everything I keep reading on, I'm not so sure that government to try to direct for affordable housing is the best route to go. It might be more of something the private sector needs to do, but I don't know, I think we have all the stuff in place for that. I think, I think it's just, we need to be aware of it, that if the USB can, if we can make it work somehow to make affordable housing more affordable, then we should do it somehow. I don't really know if I have the answer, and that's been my frustration ever since becoming a commissioner, when somebody talks affordable housing, I go, I don't have the magic bullet. So, but I think this is a good, I think it's a good recommendation.
No, you, and, and there is no magic bullet to whatever you define affordable housing is.
Right.
I, I get it, you know, and there's many names. That's what I'm saying. Moving the urban service boundary is not going to.
Yeah.
So maybe I wasn't clear. Move, just by merely moving the urban service boundary is not going to invite affordability, workforce ability, attainable, whatever you want to label it, it's not going to do much. It's a matter of time before all the property changes. If we want to accomplish that goal, that has to be separate. That has to be, we have to have regulations on any development coming, coming in.
I agree.
And I didn't direct it towards where the urban service boundary may or may not be moved. It's all requirements. This way, there's a factor inside of our LD audit that says that we have to have some smaller homes.
Correct.
And that's, that's important because, you know, everybody comes in, they want a five-bedroom house with three and a half baths and two and a half car garage, and what's affordable about? Where, where could that be? So that is a separate issue. It's not the urban service boundary discussion.
I agree. I don't think the urban service boundary is going to change, I mean, doesn't, it's going to, wouldn't change the, the scenario, but I think we need to look at other things like redevelopment in, in areas that already have water and sewer and all that sort of stuff. I mean, there's a lot that can, there's a lot that can be done. I mean, we've got, I know I just sent the county administrator a memo that there's a possibility we can do some limited affordable housing in Waterway Village, but that's for another conversation.
So I just, not to, you know, we, we killed the horse and dug it back up, and I'm going to kill it again, I guess, but not to belabor the point, but no one thing and no one entity and no one government and no one private sector is going to solve the affordability problem. And, and all of them working together is not going to solve the affordability problem anytime soon. It's just not going to happen. That's not a realistic expectation. It took us 10 years to get here. It's going to take us 10 to 15 to get out of it, and that's reality. But what we can do, and I think what this is trying to do, is not that the urban service boundary is the be-all, end-all of determining if something's affordable or not. Quite frankly, afford, moving the urban service boundary and putting, putting affordability further and further west away from your, your resources and services is not necessarily a good idea across the board. But in this instance, I think the thought was, there are people and properties that come to the county on a constant basis that are right outside the urban service boundary. We had a meeting a couple of months with, with a property owner off of 82nd that's outside the urban service boundary, but they are on the edge, and they want us, they wanted us to consider moving the urban service boundary for them. There's nothing, there's nothing beneficial to that for us on a hodgepodge or higgledy-piggledy basis, like just moving it five acres here, 10, 20 acres there. But if there was something that was a goal of the county that we wanted to try to provide resources for and accomplish, then, like affordable housing, then if they wanted to talk to us, the first thing they would have to prove and check the box on is that this would be an affordable housing development tied to the already existing, because we have all the things that you guys are talking about already, small lot sizes for affordable housing, impact fee waivers for affordable housing, possible density bonuses for affordable housing, all sorts of different programs that help the project itself be affordable. What this would do is if somebody's coming to talk to us, this is another tool we could use to encourage. So unless you're going to talk to us about an affordable housing project, period, don't even come to talk to us about moving the USB. I think that is the goal and, or that was the intention of this particular recommendation. Not that we're going to do this and now magically affordable housing, and we're going to have, you know, small, tiny home massive developments on the outskirts of the USB that, I don't think that's realistic, and I don't think that's what this was. But I do think, and maybe that's something we can do at a later meeting, is talk. But I do think, and maybe that's something we can do at a later meeting, is talk about some of the resources we do have for affordable housing from a development perspective, because I think that there's, maybe we can do some education for my fellow commissioners on what we have been doing in that realm, because we've been doing a lot in the past couple of years. But if there's no appetite for this, we don't need to belabor it. We can always, you know, put that on the back burner. We have plenty to work on right now. The other issue is increased densities for affordable housing. This isn't a USB thing. This is just an LDR, and I think what staff was trying to get is, is there some appetite to maybe explore this a little bit? We've been talking about it at A-hack. It's something we can certainly bring as a package of recommendations from A-hack, if that makes you guys a little bit happier. We're, I'm happy to, to try to do it that way, because I think there are some other things that we might want to bring forward. But is there a general appetite to even have that kind of discussion? I'm not saying that you're for it or against it. I'm not trying to box anybody in, just, would you be willing to have a more in-depth discussion about that particular subject matter?
I, I would fully support that. It's more in line with the, the other recommendation.
Okay.
Let's treat it separately.
So, we can do it, we can do it that way, if that works.
Cleanes this up and allows Chris the opportunity to address the other issue in Oslo, and maybe that can happen.
Quicker.
More expeditiously without all of these other factors involved. No?
Yes. Of course.
Awesome. All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Questions, comments, concerns? Did I cover, did we cover everything that you guys needed direction on?
Yes.
Okay. And, Ms. Schuler, you have your first official, not official, because we can't make official assignments today, but consensus.
I do.
All right. With that, we stand adjourned.